Thank you. We'll bring the meeting of November 21st, 2024 to order. Pledge allegiance, please. Please stand. Okay, thank you. The Town of Burlington will be holding the November 21st, 2024 meeting as a hybrid meeting. The governor has issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020 authorizing remote meetings under General Law Chapter 3A, Section 20, and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March 31st, 2025.
As always, members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting or hearing will not be suspended if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast. Members of the public with a particular interest in a specific item on the agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. If you're seeking to attend remotely, you may do so via the following. The URL is townofburlingtonwebx.com. Our meeting number or access code is 2343-920-7413, and the meeting password is 1645. You can join the WebEx meeting by phone at 617-315-0704. Be aware that if you are participating online, we recommend that you use the software version of WebEx and not the browser version of WebEx. We've had some bugs in the past, so that's just fair warning. And then those looking to participate remotely, please remember to raise your hand, and staff will send you a request to unmute at the appropriate time. The meeting is also being broadcast on the BICAT Government Channel. You can find it on Comcast 99, RCN 15, Verizon 41, and streamed on Facebook Live via the BICAT Government Facebook page.
Great. Thank you, Liz. Now, if this is public participation, is there anyone here in the audience or online who is here to speak on an item that's not on the agenda this evening? We'll give the speakers maximum three minutes to speak. Anybody here in the audience? I prefer people to come in for a second. This is for items that are not on the agenda tonight. Okay, seeing none.
I see no one online, Mr. Chair.
Okay, let's move on. Announcements, please.
The zoning bylaw review committee will be meeting next Monday, November 25th, and that's at 6:30 PM via Zoom. Next week is Thanksgiving week, and I just want to give everyone an update on the town hall hours. The next Wednesday, the 27th, the town hall will close at noon, and then on Thursday, the 28th, as well as Friday, the 29th, will be closed all day. The Sculpture Park Committee will be meeting Tuesday, December 10th, at 8:00 AM, and that will be via WebEx. And the Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce is organizing a holiday food drive to support the increased needs of the Burlington Food Pantry. For the full information, including participating organizations, please see the holiday food drive in the news section of their website, baccma.org. Individuals wishing to make donations can bring them to a collection box located at the chamber's office, which is 265 Wind Street.
Thank you, staff. Legal notices of interest, none; nonapprovals, none; administrative matters, none. Matters of appointment. All right, the next items on our agenda this evening are public hearings on the submitted zoning articles for January 2025 town meeting. The petitioner for each article will be providing an overview of the article which they've submitted, followed up by questions from the planning staff and members of the board. After that, I'll open up to the public for a comment period. All speakers will be given a strict three-minute maximum, and you're asked to keep the comments relative to the topic of discussion and avoid repeating previously spoken comments from others. We'll allow those in person in the main hearing room the chance to speak first, then we'll call on the WebEx users with their hands that will be raised. The planning board will not be closing the public hearing tonight, nor voting on any recommendations on the zoning meeting during tonight's meeting. All five articles and public hearings remain open to the December 5th Planning Board meeting. Okay? We'll go to item 7A. And we're going to do the zoning ones first. We'll do the applications for special permits and things after. Right? Okay. Public hearing amendment to Article 3 Districts, Article 4 Use Regulations, and Article 10 Miscellaneous and Special Regulations on the Zoning Bylaws, the creation of a new mixed-use innovation district, MIX District, submitted by the Economic Development Office. Good evening.
Thank you, Chairman Gaffney. For the record, my name is Melissa Tantakoulas, and I am here to present on the mixed-use innovation district. It's a zoning proposal initiated by the town for our commercial zoning district, and I'd like to provide a little background, given this is the first public hearing on it. And let me just make sure I can move forward on this pretty easily. There we go. So why this proposal? I want to kind of bring us back, take a high, kind of a few minutes to just say the high level context of why we're bringing this proposal forward to town meeting. It is a community-driven proposal, so the process has been long and trying to balance many needs. The key problems, so there are a few problems kind of that we're trying to address with this zoning proposal. Our zoning has not changed since the 1980s, so that small corner is a patch of our existing zoning. This is limiting development, and it's also limiting commercial values as things have changed in terms of market preferences. We're also looking at post-pandemic pressures with changes in remote work and conditions around office vacancies. They are higher than normal, as well as, you know, our sustain, our suburban development patterns have been also hindering our desire to create more sustainable environments. And in the end, there's a lot of talk from our community about live-work walkable areas, and that's what this zoning is presenting. Let's see here. Okay. I'm just a little off on this, so I'll try to work that. Does that work it? So those are our existing conditions. Just reminding folks that we have a patchwork of variety of zoning districts. So the red is a BG, we have industrial, we have PDD, all through this area. And the existing conditions are there to the right, which are the suburban kind of patterns with a lot of underutilized asphalt. Our office vacancies today per CoStar are approaching 20% if you add both the subleases as well as the direct vacancies, and this is for the fourth quarter in 2024. And the projections, as you can see into the green line, tend to go up, and our proposal is intended to address this and mitigate these vacancies. We have capital projects. Our Burlington community is, it's exciting that we have the Fox Hill coming up and the police station already approved. The possible, the possibility of a new high school is imminent, and we need to be mindful of our new growth and how we are hitting our tax levy. And I want to also bring us back to a time a few, several years ago now, we worked on a comp plan, and we spent almost $200,000 on a comp plan that really doesn't mean much unless you're implementing those goals. So what you're trying to do is create street-level implementation, and that really means new zoning. So the mixed-use zoning really tries to bring to fruition those elements and the goals that we talked about in our, in our comp plan, which is walkability, sustainable development, new housing options, and not to forget the tax revenue. We talked about this a little bit, but I don't want to, you know, we presented to Concom, and it's important for them in their efforts, too. Heat island effects, improved stormwater runoff. Our existing conditions, obviously, are mostly drive-only, and we have a lot of limited green space. So these are some of the problems we're trying to address with the new zoning. How we got here? I thought maybe we'd take a quick moment also to just reflect back that this was kind of the sand pits. This was the mall area prior to the roads being built. And at one time, we took some time to really look at what new zoning could be. So these hash marks were revisiting a proposal for increased density, increased commercial, which had led us to a lot of success in the 70s, 80s, and well into the 90s. But now, moving into 2025 and beyond, the next generation of development is, you know, what we're proposing to town meeting, what we've talked about as planning board members over the last few meetings under the discussion, items of discussion. And this board, as well as town meeting, has taken some great visionary action in the past. Not only the older land use map that we just saw, but the PDD approvals that have created Third Avenue, the district. We did the three-way land swap that led us to Grand View and the life sciences inclusion in our uses. This has all led to really positive change in Burlington, and I'd like to think that this is kind of in line for our next kind of, kind of green, or I look, the fifth green block there is our mixed-use innovation district, I hope to be up there, because this really will be fulfilling a lot of the, the vision that we've talked about, and we look forward into the future. It's almost like, you know, our PDD that we are bringing to town meeting versus a developer's PDD. Community engagement. As many of you here know, because you've been part of the advisory group, this has been a long process. It started during the COVID years in 2022. We've had some, you know, there were some initially online meetings. We had visits out to the site. We had our consultants come and bring, you know, active kind of blocks to create an idea of, you know, really engage the community, what we could see here. And, and I don't want to forget that it's not just a pie-in-the-sky dream. This is actually, you know, grounded in a market context where mixed use and the idea of integrating residential, commercial, retail, and our amenities is, you know, a bright spot. It is a strength to start to mix and integrate these uses. So in Boston, in these bright green areas, which they call vibrant mixed-use areas, they have lower vacancy rates, higher rents, and these are dynamic spaces which we're trying to replicate in Burlington. This is just a review of kind of some of the years that I just mentioned in terms of the process, starting in 2022. We had ULI Mass Development working with us. They helped identify the corridor and the opportunity, and today we are here with Planning Board and with our intention to bring it to town meeting in January. So what is exactly proposed? In the pamphlet, it is very word, and in your documents, it is very word-heavy because land use policy translates, you know, to narrative in a lot of ways. This proposal is a little different. You'll see a lot more graphics, but it, it shares what can be done in this area. So the proposal comes in two phases, the bylaw, which is Article 13, and then the uses. It also includes a map and the dimensional requirements, but it all really references the bylaw. The new zoning district is in pink on the right, and it will replace the patch, most of the patchwork of the BG IG areas. It includes also, if you can see these green lines, these are intentional aspirational ideas for complete streets. The street type helps orient the buildings as they come in for infill development over time. These lines, the Green Boulevard, or the Gateway Boulevard, Commercial Street, and Local Street, help to shape the public realm, and that's why it's important to have on our regulating map. Also, a lot of, I mean, through our community process, the Vine Brook Greenway had been identified, and we wanted to put it on the regulating plan to direct private and public investment in this area. That Greenway plan, it started as a concept through some of our community leaders as the River Walk, and what we're trying to do is kind of say with this regulating map, this is, this green area is important to our community, and we hope to enhance it and create a special Greenway over time. Other key elements of this proposal, as you, as planning board members know well, not only is it the integration of uses, but we have 20% requirement on green space. The design standards include the public realm. There is a requirement for development sites to be commercial dominant with a 60% of their square footage, commercial, and 40% residential, so we can keep the strength of the commercial and the integrity of the commercial district intact. And building types. So I know in our conversations with Planning Board that different times we've talked about the height of the building and the context of the building. So this proposal going to town meeting does keep the residential mixed-use buildings at 70 feet tall and 120 feet tall for commercial buildings. And I'll show you a little bit more on what that looks like in context. So this is Article 14. This is, when I mentioned, it's text-heavy. These are the two first pages of things that you will see if you are watching and you're a town meeting member, Article 14. And then it does include uses. So in your use table, there is a new column, and that'll be the mixed-use districts. And if you go through that document, you will see what is, what is an allowed use and what is not an allowed use, and what will require a special permit. And these, what we tried to do, we reviewed this with Land Use Committee, what we tried to do was really match or blend, I should say, the general business district uses, which are existing, and the innovation district uses, which are right next door. So it's, in most cases, that's what you'll see if you do a comparable analysis. Included in the zoning, I mentioned, are graphics. This is different than our typical zoning package. It includes guidance and requirements for outdoor green spaces. And then with the zoning, it's not as a typical FAR, but it does say, here are the building types that can happen in this zone. And then if you go through Section, Figure 4.5, you will see the various types of buildings. And again, those are both residential, commercial, research, and also townhouses on the smaller level. I want to say, you know, going back to the height, these building types are reflective of our existing context in the commercial district. Barnes &amp; Noble is approximately 60 feet. Macy's with the top kind of pent-
Go parapet.
Greenie, thank you, thank you. That up to bottom is approximately 70 feet. Archer's, 70 feet. The Residence at 75, and the Marriott at 85. We also have recently approved, sorry, backwards, oops. We had recently approved in the district just next door, three tall buildings, and those are approximately 120 feet, depending on how it's calculated with the penthouse. Those have not been built, but those have been approved. And then we have the 185-foot building, which is the Charles River Building, and that is taller, that is, based on our process, had been something the community really wanted to stay away from. And the, the reason this is important to just point out is because as we think of trying to consolidate parking and trying to open up green space, we do need some density and some height to make that happen. So this is a 30-year-plus vision. Currently, we have a lot of asphalt. If we look left to the Third Avenue, you know, we'll see a lot of buildings in the 70-foot range. If you look right to the district, we'll see 120-foot to 180-foot buildings. So in this area, which we're almost like, it's a third district, and some folks have talked about, is in this, you know, the 70-to-100-foot height. With that density, we hope that we can kind of create a good balance of open space and handsome buildings for the future. I wanted to just bring your attention to the fiscal impact analysis that we've reviewed with Ways and Means and the Select Board. Several people have asked over, you know, the, the last few months, as we move this zoning forward, what is the financial impact for the town? So we were able to, with the funding of the Office of Environmental Affairs and Energy, we received a grant to work with a consultant who is a real estate analyst who works for developers on fiscal impact reviews and studies. And this, these are the kind of the top insights from that study. I believe our planning director, Liz, you were able to get the study to the Planning Board members?
Yep, it definitely was passed along.
So there's more information online for all these studies, and the items I am referencing, as well as the PowerPoint will be online as well. Upshot for the fiscal impact analysis is that the net positive revenue for the development over the 10-year projected timeframe is positive. The impact on schools is much more limited based on our history of existing school-aged children in multifamily homes, and we believe because there's more residential and enhancement of place, there's going to be more employment opportunity from the mixed-use district, as well as housing options and better public realm. This just reinforces what we had studied through this process. Often, people, especially developers in the developer perspective, they look at the forecast for demand initially, which is square footage. They are not looking at, one, just building type necessarily. They're looking at, can this area support residential or commercial use or a lab use, given the context, given the number of employees, the housing density, the existing job density? So a demand forecast shows that in this area, 1.2 million square feet can be supported over 10 years. And given that, assuming that was all built out, a lot of assumptions here on that.
May I ask just a question before I forget this? So when you say can be supported over 10 years?
Yes.
Does that mean when fully built out, it, it will include 1.2 million? When you say supported over 10 years, I'm not sure what that means.
Supported means that it could, yes, that area could handle that, but is it going to be built? Is a different scenario.
When you say supported over 10 years, what does that mean?
So this analysis, a fiscal impact analysis, so it assumes what demand could happen, so this is a projection for 10 years for this area, and then it allows, for us, we break it down into different categories.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is, how do you base that 10-year period on? Does that mean it, it's likely to be built out over 10 years? Or does it mean it'll support it today, but it's probably not going to be built out for another 10 years? What do you mean by it'll be, it'll be, it'll support 1.2 over 10 years?
It means that if there was property owners and no zoning in place, 1.2 million square feet could be accommodated, it could be supported, it could, I guess I'm repeating myself.
Could be economically viable.
Economically viable.
Which means it can be, it can be built the day this is, is, is enacted. If, in other words, this, this zoning can't enact.
There's no projects or nothing is planned that would enable 1.2 million square feet. This is almost a thought exercise in the fiscal impact, so that if it was allowed, if there was interest.
In theory, I'm talking about in theory right now. In theory, it could be built the day this is enacted. In theory. And you're saying it might, it's not likely to be built out until, fully for 10 years? Is that what you're saying?
That is, I think that is what I'm saying. So yes. So if today, 1.2 million square feet was developed and created, it would take 10 years for that to be fully occupied and used.
Right. Okay. But, but in theory, it could be done the day it's enacted?
Her model is using facts, not in theory if everything happened today.
Well, we don't, I mean, it's, those are projections. So we have to take the worst, but we have to take the worst case.
So I think, Joe, yes. And you're right. In theory, today, if there was, I think, I think your exercise and thought is if today this zoning would allow 1.2 million square feet, yes. That is a yes.
Additional or, or in total? Is that additional?
In, in total.
In total, okay. Versus what, right, what exists right now in that same geographic area? So I want to know what the increase is.
Is that 1.2 million additional to what we currently have today?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that's what I just said. Is it additional? And you said no, in total. So it's additional to what we have right now? It's another 1.2 million potential at full buildout?
Yes, I think I actually, I understand what you're saying. So today, if the zoning passed, could 1.2 million square feet be developed?
Additional square feet.
Additional square feet. And the answer is theoretically, yes. And-
I'm not saying it's going to happen.
Right.
I need to, in my mind-
No, I understand, and then-
Make the worst-case scenario, and that's basic decisions.
But I think also, because it's a 10-year projection, what they call the absorption rate, that even if you built it today, it wouldn't be absorbed, meaning it wouldn't all be occupied, tenanted, and rented out for 10 years. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, right, that's, that's what you're, you know, based on your calculations, that's what the projections are.
The worst-case scenario is in 10 years, 1.2 million square feet is supported.
No, the worst-case scenario is the day it's enacted, it could be built.
But it won't be occupied tomorrow.
It just can't be.
I don't care whether it's-
So oftentimes, you wouldn't develop something if it was vacant.
Right, it's even worse if it's vacant, I mean-
Right, so that's why you wouldn't, that's why developers wouldn't-
Negative if it's vacant, too, right?
Correct.
But I mean, we know, again, I don't want, go ahead, because I'm, I don't, I just wanted that clarified. I have other questions, but I'll ask them.
Okay, we're good.
I didn't apologize for it.
No problem. I, I hope that's, it makes it clear. It can be supported, it could be if the, with this zoning, could it be developed? Yes. Could it be all tenanted and occupied? No, because it's a 10-year absorption and projection. And if, from day one to 10 years out, if that was all built out and occupied, there would be a net positive, though nonetheless, on the tax revenue from all that, from the 1.2 million square feet we're talking about. Does that make sense?
What's that number? What's that positive number?
It's a positive number.
What, what is?
What is the number?
What is the number?
Oh, sorry.
$53 million.
$53 million. Thank you. Thank you, Jess. So in the fiscal impact report that is online, that has been distributed to Planning Board, the summary here helps to, I think, itemize and show exactly where the costs would be. In particular, I think it's not surprising that a lot of the costs would be kind of in education, because we would be introducing residential units. I think going back, what was notable through the analysis, that every unit where people are concerned, there would be multiple student-age kids or school-age kids, it actually ends up to be 0.08 school-age kids per unit. So the impact on education, although it's there, it's not as dramatic, and the net positive on the revenue remains high at $53 million every year from a district in this area with a mixed-use in place.
Let's just a quick question. We have three columns there?
Oh, yes.
What individual of those last three columns, what are we looking at there?
Yes.
What's the differentiation?
So 46 million is today's dollars.
Today's dollars, okay.
Imagining it in the future, doing kind of nothing but maybe allowing one hotel, we'd get $50 million. And then with the introduction of all the mixed-use, assuming 1.2 million was developed, it would be still net positive at $53 million.
Thank you.
So this may help shed some light on the analysis, is the case study for Third Ave. So in 2005, this was the zoning. We had an industrial-used area with some commercial, and the values were relatively modest, and hence the tax revenue that came from that was modest. And 2024, after the PDD zoning change that allowed for residential, additional retail, R&amp;D, we have these darker spots, which are much more valuable. The darker blue is much more valuable, which means more tax revenue from that. If back then, we did not do anything and we did not support the PDD, the do-nothing version would- version, would have a still-earning tax revenue from that corridor, but it'd be about 1, 3.2 million, whereas today, that same area is 6.3 million that's generated from that PDD. So there is the do-nothing, or there is the support for the change, in this case, it was a change to a PDD, that saw the increase in the tax, in the value and the tax revenue. The zoning also is intended to kind of address some of the community benefits that are broader than just the mixed-use zoning district itself, around the economic sustainability, environmental gains with what we mentioned around the Zion Brook, and livability. As we know, people are, you know, interested more than ever these days to live in closer proximity to their work, they want a place that's dynamic, and in the real estate world, you know, it's what they call a competition for place, or earning the commute. These are kind of phrases that are thrown around that really talk about creating a special place that is attractive and usable. And that kind of gives you the whole broad spectrum. I'm happy to go into any detail for the, any of the aspects on the, on the more, if you'd like.
Great, thank you, Melissa. I know it's a lot of work into that. I and a number of board members here and folks I know in the audience recognizing them have been involved in the community engagements, a lot of good input and listening to us there. So why don't I start off with Steph?
I don't really have any comments, other than to say that Melissa and I have, you know, kind of worked on this kind of together, like I couldn't, like, you know, we worked on it, you know, she did, did take on most of it, but we, you know, I do support this. You know, my professional opinion is that this is, this is a good thing.
Okay, thank you. We'll go through with our planning board members. I'll start to my right with Member LaRue.
Thank you. We've been discussing this for quite some time, so I don't have any more comments at this time. I just am looking forward to hearing from the audience members. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Member Lu. Vice Chairman Sutherland, please.
Thank you. As Member LaRue said, we have been doing this for a very long time. Actually, this was one of the first projects I got involved with when I was elected into this position. One of the reasons why I first wanted to join the Planning Board was observing what went on in town during the pandemic. The restaurants, the vacancies, the question of will the mall be back to what it was? And, you know, I think for me, it was, with my professional background, I feel like there's a lot I can do to help to really kind of figure out what, what can we do in the long-term future? Not today, because today is already gone, but what can we do in the future to try to continue to have a healthy mix of development, like so many amazing Town Meeting and Planning Board members have done in the past, to really see us through those tough times in the future? And, you know, I think this is a giant step in that direction. I would have liked to see other areas involved in this, but that's just me being greedy. But I also know that change is difficult for the town, so we have to take it out kind of one, one bite at a time. And that's kind of where we, we've netted here. I think we all came out of COVID with still some hurt and some pain, but the mall is doing great, and really that, think that is to the credit of the development that's happened around town. Third Ave, the district, Lifetime, we're in the stage of life where traffic is worse than ever in Massachusetts. People are no longer going multiple places to get things done. They really want to find a place so they can maximize what they need to get done in one location. And, you know, that is kind of the objective of this, is to continue to develop towards walkability, housing options, sustainable development, and steady tax revenue. So this will not happen overnight, or I believe all at the same time, but I think it really kind of helps set expectations for what is a town we want to see in the future for a lot of our development. And I think this really gets us started in the right position.
Thank you, Member Sutherland. Member Impemba.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to start by saying I love the concept, and I appreciate the amount of work that's gone into it, because that, I, you know, being on as long as I have, I know what goes into that type of a project, and to bring it from the beginning to the end. I would be remiss if I didn't say that I'm extremely concerned about the amount of traffic that that could cause down in that area. Every time, we, we still, we don't even know the impact of the increase in the square footage of, of the district yet, because as you said, that some of those buildings are not fully built out yet. But I do know that we've had complaints in that intersection, we've had issues with people taking, you know, we, every time we have an opportunity to have one of the businesses in, in that plaza down there, you know, we, we talked about a no-right turn coming out of that plaza, because there's too many cars coming through and going into the residential area down there. We compare this to the, we compared it to Third Ave, which is not at all surrounded by residential area. This is a residential area. For the most part, it's going to rebut a residential area, and I feel like it's already, it's, I don't think it could absorb this, this type of additional construction down in that area. And at the same time, I, I hear people saying, well, you know, we need it to survive going forward. I, again, and I've, I've said this before, and nauseating, I've said it before, is I feel like if you look at that mall parking lot, I've never seen it so full. The whole time I've lived in this town, I've never seen it so full. So something is working down there, as it is right now. And I don't feel we're going to fall behind, given the fact that we've drawn in the best restaurants in the world, we've drawn in, you know, the headquarters of the best corporations in the world, we've done all the right things, we've picked the right businesses, we've, we've tried to keep out the wrong businesses, we've, over the years, I think planned it well, but I think in this case, and I know, you know, we talk about a 10-year period, but I, the reality is, when you put a law, when you change a bylaw, when you change a zoning law, you get to look at the worst-case scenario. And, you know, the worst-case scenario, in my opinion, is, you know, there's, you see the state's looking for all kinds of places to be put in residential dwellings. My feeling is, what's going to happen is, you're going to see a lot of residential development going on down there at the beginning, and then you're going to start to see some of the businesses trickle in. And I'm, I don't care if it's residential or, or commercial, the reality is, I'm not sure that area can handle it. And I just, I just feel like we're just, you know, we're, we're looking at, you know, like a beautifully conceptual project that I don't think is going to work in that area. I just think it's going to gum it up. I mean, you know, around the holiday, you can't even get down, you know, Mall Road, you can't even get down Lexington Street. Imagine putting an additional 1.2 million square feet in there? That's huge. 1.2 million square feet, that's the size of that whole Sun Micros campus. That's what, that's what that was, 1.2, 1.3 million square feet when that was built out. That's huge. I don't know how we can accommodate that. The infrastructure just isn't there to accommodate it. And we're going to have the same roadways when this is fully built out as we have right now. There's no room for expansion of those roadways, nor would we want to expand the roadways. But the bottom line is, there is no room to expand, so we're going to be, we're going to be dealing with the same road infrastructure that we have right now, only throw another 1.2 million square foot, foot, you know, space in there. We haven't talked about, we've only talked about the revenue it's going to generate. We haven't talked about the cost that it's going to be to the police and the fire and all the additional.
Isn't there?
Well, yeah, but in other words, we talked about the, you know, we don't know what the numbers are.
It's a part of the 53 net positive.
You can, you can project, but we all know, we, you know, we, we don't know, I don't know where they came about to those numbers. Right? I mean, you can say, this is what it's going to be, but what does that include? Does that include building buildings? Does that include, you may be talking about additional, a projection of additional firefighters, additional police, additional things like that, but there's a lot of other things that go along with that. So, you know, you, you can't just change bylaws in areas that are going to just, you know, create problems in the future. I mean, Burlington's grown tremendously, and we're, you know, that, that side of town has absorbed a lot. Not sure we can absorb anymore in that area. I don't think, I'm pretty sure we can't absorb anymore in that area, but again, that's my opinion. It seems like there's, you know, a lot of, a lot of people in favor, and I think they are, because it's a phenomenal concept. It worked well i- in Third Ave, it, you know, it works pretty well in the district, but I know now we're throwing additional into that same area, so very concerned about that. That's my.
Thank you, Member Impemba. Member Cavino, online, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I'm all set right now. I'd just like to hold on, listen for a while. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My comments, a couple of things, and I think Mr. Impemba made, made some good points. You know, what I think, when I think about this, I, I think about Silicon Valley, and how they have very large areas, they have very large housing complexes down on North First Street, for example, and if you're not, you've been there, it's, it's Google, and then a big apartment complex around there. But the, but the roads themselves are very large, they're boulevards, right? They've got four lanes of traffic, they got turning, individual turning on the other side. So I guess my question would be, is it possible, is part of these, is it possible to take some of that land that they own and say, you have to increase the size of that road, and have dedicated turning, and be like a four-lane, two-lane straight, one on the right, one on the left, or either side? Now you're, you're taking that from a private standpoint, but the only way to do that is create Mall Road to be four lanes either way, or something like that. That's, you don't need to answer that question now, but that's something, maybe to address that, you are going to put more traffic on there, but it's, if you go to Silicon Valley, it's manageable. You know, you do wait very long periods at the light to let the traffics go through that, the amount of traffic they have there, particularly in the mornings, from my experience. We do appreciate that, you know, during the community engagements and when coming before the Planning Board before, that you have modified this. The first major modification was to reduce the scope of that, and then additionally to remove areas that were abutting residential right directly. The only other comment I would make is, on the presentation that you do reference the Seaport as an example, other applicants that have said they mistakenly called Burlington the city, I would always try to stay away from that, to reference kind of cityscapes. But what I would recommend is maybe, you showed a green area out near Walton, which may have been Watertown, perhaps? Was that maybe the Arsenal area? You may want to reference that as a suburban, kind of a benchmark. Just as, just as a thought there for other people that, if they hear Seaport, they'll think, you know, City.
Seaport.
And then you saw a little green area out, as you go into the suburbs, which is successful. And I know they've just announced something recently with the, the Arsenal area, they're doing something very, very similar to, to code zoning, and they're trying to make that, again, I think is similar to what you're proposing here. So this, what you're proposing is not unusual. So thank you for all the hard work. I know it's, it's a, this is a big deal and a tight, a tight rope to walk. So this is a public hearing. We're going to open up to the public, and anyone that would like to speak, but we're going to start with the folks that are here on site. And please come to the microphone, state your name, and again, try not to repeat the comments here that, that other folks have talked about. Okay, seeing none here on, in the, in the room, we have a hand up, Sunil.
Yep. There should be a request to mute on your screen, Sunil. There should be a box that pops up.
Sunil, please introduce yourself with your name and address, please.
Yeah, hi, my name is Sunil Prajabati. I've been a town resident for more than 30 years, and appreciate the opportunity to speak today. I have been following this project for a while. I'm really happy to see that it's coming to a conclusion, and some changes will come to the, to the town now. I feel like, you know, it's, it's still very conservative. We could have gone a little more bold with this corner of the area where, where we could probably put more density in terms of both residential and commercial, maybe go a little more with, with height also, kind of vision that as our own Seaport district. And then one thing I would suggest, I would recommend, that we involve the state government, the highway department, right? The traffic is definitely will be a problem. We are at an intersection of two major roads, Route 3 and Route 95. There are also the, the local street that converge there, specifically the Mall Road and the Middle Sexton Pike. So, so there is, there is definitely opportunity to reconfigure that, that intersection, possibly put some direct ramps from, from the Turnpike to Route 3 North, or maybe Route I-95 South, and so forth, right? There are possible ways to, to reduce the traffic congestion on, on some of those areas. So, so I think the question I have is, are we working with, with, with state in, in any way to improve the traffic situation there?
Great, thank you. Yeah, Sunil, could you provide your address, please?
Yes, I live on 347 New Burlington.
Thank you very much, Sunil. Okay, seeing no one else online?
Can Melissa respond to his question?
Sure.
Yeah, I just had a quick response to that. We are working with the state. Most recently, we submitted a grant, and they awarded us $1 million to improve the length of about 1, 1.3 miles of Middle Sexton Turnpike, from roughly the Trader Joe's to just beyond, just short maybe of Lifetime Fitness. So they will be allowing us to study for improvements for multimodal, so all modes, in particular pedestrian and, you know, other, I guess, we're going to call them, they call it rolling transportation. But, and then we also have been working with MAPC, which is more of a regional planning organization that is developing, you know, bike path and some alternative modes of transportation through this commercial district, so that we can, you know, again, have the study, have the plans, and then we can request money from the state.
Great, perfect. And I, I know that's important, because we've, in the past, looked at the Bricksmore property, which is down, if folks familiar with the Old Tower Records, we've been trying to work with them on pedestrian access to that with the new restaurants we have coming in there, and I think that's important to be able to do that. Thank you. Okay.
I did see one other hand. Was there anybody else online? I think it may have been lower, I just want to give it just a minute. Yep, there we go.
Oh, there we go.
Yep, there's a request unmuted.
Paula, if you could introduce yourself by name and address, please. Paula, let's try to see if you're unmuted.
Yep, just sent a request.
Looks like it's unlocked, so she should be able to unmute herself.
Yeah. There should be a, kind of a pop-up that, that goes on the middle of your screen. Paula, if you can hear us.
If not, maybe you could type in comments.
Yeah, we have our.
If you could do that, Paula.
Turned off, so.
Yep, send email or.
Yeah, Paul, if you want to, send an email to planning@berlincoln.org, that would be the best, best case, and if you're having WebEx issues, you might want to log off the meeting and then come back into the meeting.
Okay.
Oh, wait, wait, she just, oh, never mind. She handed it down, sorry.
Oh, took her hand down, okay.
Sorry. Got excited.
We appreciate your, whatever input you have, though, Paula, so thank you. We, we definitely want to hear that. Okay? Any, any motions?
Oh, I would like to make a motion to continue this public hearing to the Plan Board, meeting up December 5th, 2024.
Second.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Impemba.
Yes.
Cavino.
Yes. Okay, that's 500. Thank you.
Thank you, Planning Board members, and thank you for all your time reviewing this today. Appreciate it.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, 7B. We have a public hearing and amendment to Article 3, zoning districts bylaws to adopt a new town of Burlington Sinus District, zoning wrapping, create a new set of Sinus regulations for the Town Center Overlay District of the zoning bylaws. This is submitted by the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you. My name is Betsy Hughes. I am a Town Meeting member, and I'm also a member of the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee and the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee's signage subcommittee, and that is a mouthful. But on behalf of both of those committees, we're really pleased to come here tonight and talk to you about signage. This has been a project that's been a long time, many years in the making, and we're very excited to get it to this point. First, let me give you an overview, just briefly, of where we've come from. As a result of a sign that went up in the town center a number of years ago, which many found to be oversized and out of place, and wanted somebody to do something about it, but we found that the sign was perfectly legal. So ZBRC, at that point, formed a signage subcommittee with representatives from Planning, zoning, the ZBA, and worked in consultation with the Town Council, Chamber of Commerce, and researched all the past efforts that have been put in place to deal with signage in the town of Burlington, because it has been an issue. After all of that, we put together a strategy, and this strategy had to realize, first of all, that Burlington is really a complex town. We are very different personalities, no matter where you go, whether you're at the Burlington Mall, in the town center, or over by Sullivan Funeral Home. It just looks like three different towns. So one size is never going to fit all when it comes to signage. So we wanted to avoid having an all-encompassing set of bylaws. And as a result of that, we elected to create signage districts. We wanted to make sure that the regulations that we put together were concise and understandable, take out all the, you know, techie speak out of that, planning speak, I think, Liz's closet, and assure that we have effective and appropriate signage, given the context of where it happens to be located. It's really tough sometimes to balance the needs of the town, the businesses, and the residents in one way. And you can't really, maybe you can't make everybody happy, but what you can do is try the best you can to make as many people as happy as possible. So we are fortunate in that Burlington has a master plan. So we took the master plan and the Town Center Design Review Rules and Regulations, which is a document that's familiar to you all, that the Planning Board put together in 2009, which has guided the development of the Town Center area, I believe, since that time. And we put that all together, and we knew, however, that at this point, the committee had kind of, we had run out of expertise in these areas, and we needed some help. So after obtaining funding in May from Town Meeting, we sought out consulting partners to help with this. And in late July, we engaged a consultant, Uteal Architecture, from Boston. We gave them all the documents, the master plan, the design regulations. And then in July and in August, we took a tour. We took a tour of the downtown area, and then we took them to other parts of town where we felt that there was some really good work had been done on signage. Once we had done that, we wanted to engage the Town Center businesses, so we conducted two focus groups and then had a survey that we put together and sent out to 75 Town Center businesses. To give you a sense of what we heard, first was about the whole visual area. Visibility for many of those businesses is really poor as you drive by, especially on Cambridge Street, because their cars are moving very fast. Some of the stores are in the back, you can't see them, and that's a problem. Monument signs, which is a type of sign they thought would be really, really helpful in those areas, they really want to have signs, but they want to make sure that they're done tastefully. When it comes to the administrative part, the rules are long, they're complicated. The process, some people said, oh, yes, we know exactly what it takes to get what our sign should do and where I need approval, and I don't. But then one of those people said, I thought I did, but then I got a letter from the building inspector that I had violated a rule, so I had to undo it. So clearly, there's some room for improvement there. And they wanted to avoid the variance process because it's expensive and time-consuming. They had some general thoughts as well. The Beer Garden, which is, Melissa, I don't know if she's still here, but that was a great success and brought in a number of people that had never been down to that area before and really drove business. They said that they don't want it to be ye olde Burlington. There's a great vibe down there, and they want us to kind of take that and move it forward. And then suggested that maybe the town needs to be connected in a more, a little bit more and show more interest in supporting the growth of those small businesses. So you kind of put all of this together, and along with best practices that we're learning from the consultant and balancing the needs of everyone involved, and we came up with the creation of two bylaws. The first is to create the Town Center Signage District, which is on this map, which, that little tiny part, it's hard to see, but, oh, no, it's not. Thank you, Kayla. So this is the only part of Burlington we're talking about. It goes from the high school, down Cambridge Street, down to the plaza where Joe's Restaurant, Jimmy's Restaurant is. And that is the only part of Burlington that we're going to be talking about. We're not talking about signage at the mall, we're not talking about any other signage in any other part of town, just that. The next thing we did was that we put together signage regulations. We have a bylaw to create that. The first four pages of the bylaw are definitions, and it's a definition for any kind of sign that you might possibly see anywhere, I think. There are signs I had never heard of, and, but I have now. And then we created a bylaw to create the first signage district, which is the Town Center Signage District. And in that, the requirements in a table. Just to quickly review what that is, it, this bylaw goes through the administration and enforcement, the regulations, general requirements, and exclusions. This is a zoning bylaw change, for those of you who may not be familiar with that. And what that means is that things don't have to change immediately. If it was a general bylaw change, it would have to change right away. But this means that unless there is a substantive change in the building or ownership or signage, that nothing will have to change. The next thing we developed is the Burlington Signage District Design Guidelines. This is a document which will be a companion document to the Planning Board's Design Rules and Regulations. The Design Rules and Regulations does not have a chapter for signage, so this will now come in and work with that document if the Planning Board elects to adopt it. And it's also going to clarify the application process and the requirements involved with that. It's going to provide both visual and a technical guide for not only businesses, but for the town departments, like the building department, et cetera, who are in charge of enforcement. Now, this document is going to be flexible, because we're starting now, we're going to learn things as we go, and you're going to want to be able to have some flexibility as time and the area changes to amend things in a way that makes sense. Just to provide a really quick overview, and you're not going to read this, and that's fine, but this covers everything from the town map to the types of signs and with visual examples. And this, I think, will give an example, and this speaks to, okay, how do you measure? What's the front of a store? This shows you how you would do that. What, okay, what's an awning sign? Well, there you go, there's an awning sign. And not only that, but it tells you how big it needs to be, how tall it needs to be, where it needs to be, and what the requirements are. And then it also shows you, in the context of where it might be. So this is showing a monument sign, showing landscaping, which is required, and how it might play out in front of one of the buildings. And if you look at that building, it might actually look somewhat familiar. As I said before, this is a zoning change, nothing's going to change right away, but maybe we can help accelerate that change. And one of the ways to do that is maybe we could find ways to provide incentives for that. So what we did is we asked for initial ideas from our consultant, based on their experience in different communities. And the first was around financial incentives, and pretty much all of them had them to some extent. And it covered, first you define what improvements you're talking about, whether it's new signage repairs or lighting. And then what is the incentive? Maybe it's waiving the fee, so you don't have to pay for a building permit. Or maybe there are grants that are available, or maybe there's a cost share that we could do. And then in terms of funding mechanisms, there is ARCA money that, I don't know if we have any left, but if we do, that might be an option. There are also grants that we can apply for, and Burlington's been, as Melissa just said, Burlington's been very successful in applying for grants for these kinds of things. So we would try to do that. So, but before I finish, I wanted to share with you, is this a dance? One piece of good news. And that is that we were awarded a $25,000 grant from the state. Now, the proposal that we gave to Town Meeting, we made a request for $40,000 for this project. We are totally on track, on budget, which means now that this project is going to cost $15,000 and not 40.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Melissa. So I think on a high note, I'm going to end. So what I need is your questions, your feedback, and of course, your support.
Thank you, Betsy. I think that's absolutely the way to end it, is on a high note, so great job, nice strategy. So what we'll do is we'll hear from staff first.
I am so pleased that this has, that this has gone on. For many years, I've said that, you know, signage has always kind of been a prickly subject, especially at Town Meeting, and, you know, it really has to be something that comes from within. And I have always recommended, we need to get an outside person, an outside consultant, a third party to help us and guide us, and that's exactly what went on, and I think it's wonderful, so really, really pleased.
Excellent. Let's start off with board members. I'll go to my left, Vice Chair, Sutherland.
Thank you. I think I said last time, and it still stands true. This is great work. You would think something with signs would be simple, easy, straightforward, anything but. I think you should do all our projects. The design guidelines are just so easy to understand, which is so important, and I love that. And I just want to say, I think, as much as I would love to see even more advancements within the entire town, doing it in Town Center is absolutely the right place. We, as, you know, part of the master plan, want to see much more small businesses come in Town Center, and for small businesses that are not well-known, signs are very important in order to kind of draw that interest. So to give them an easier path of understanding, here are the options, here's what can be done, here's how you can be supported, I think is really important to enable those small businesses. So I am extremely excited for this. I just had one follow-up question from our last meeting, where we had said, you know, kind of on the flip side, you know, somebody leaves or is vacant, how do we motivate the taking down of the signs or repair, besides the incentives of updating businesses that already have their signs, how do we kind of have that counter incentive to, when you depart, having the landlord make sure the current sign is well taken care of?
In the guidelines, there's a section on obsolete signs, and they are to be removed within a certain amount of time. There's also, in one of the suggestions, oh my God, one of the suggestions is on the, that you also had made, was around enforcement. So we added a section on enforcement as well.
Great.
So that is the answer to the question. So if somebody doesn't do it, they will have to pay a fine.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Impemba.
I as well want to thank you guys. I know how complicated it is and how much work is involved, because we've, Bill and I know only too well, being on for a long time, and then all of a sudden, it went nowhere. I mean, we thought we accomplished it, and then it just stopped. But, so my one question is, you said you, I read what you sent and said you incorporated some of the things from last meeting, but I didn't, my version didn't have any, any different color.
No.
To be able to distinguish what went in. Can you just, in a nutshell, kind of just tell me what, explain what went in from, as a result of the last meeting?
Yeah, I'm going to, let's see how I can do on that one. We definitely, because we had input from a number of different places, so we added the enforcement area. There was an issue about signage on the second floor and what was going to happen with signage on the second floor. We've added a section that addresses that, so that there is signage on the second floor. There was a concern about what's considered a sign inside a window, and whether, you know, we had five feet before, and so we've amended that. So it's two feet for a sign and no illumination allowed, and five feet if there's illumination. So if somebody has some sort of a, you know, a fancy sign in the back, that, as long as it's five feet back, and I think that was the extent of what you had asked.
Sandwich boards, steward, any...
Yeah, the A-frame signs are there. Oh, balloons. We excluded balloons or anything tied to...
Anything hanging off.
Anything hanging on is not allowed in the use table now.
Okay. Great. That's very, very good. Sounds like you incorporated everything, or at least...
I think we did.
Found a way to address all our concerns.
I think we did.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Impemba. Mr. Covino.
Nothing, except just to say that it looks like this time, we may make it, which is good. Thank you.
Great. Okay, thank you. Ms. LaRue.
No question, great job.
Okay, thank you. The only comment I would have is, it's quick work from when that was approved by Town Meeting for the consultant, and to come into this, you know, within, let's say, a six-month period is fantastic. Good job, team. As Mr. Impemba noted, we've run on a few of them and tried to really get the whole town at one time, which, in a big chunk, and wasn't successful. We were close, but didn't get there, because you're talking, is a highway sign applicable for something that's down the Town Center. So what I, the only comment that was I have, if you look at signs that were around town that were good signs, you probably went to the Building 19 Simon Shop area, where if you look, there are complimentary awnings, and then the signs with downlighting and gooseneck lighting. Again, that was not by accident that that happened to come on. That was a lot of work done by, when we had a Town Center Committee, we spent a lot of nights beyond the usual nights to get that into place. So that was, if you look in that area, take a spin around there, and you can see what can the Town Center look like, that's probably a good example of that. So thank you very much. We'll go and open up to the public. This will be our inside public folks that are here at the meeting first. Anybody want to come on up to the microphone, introduce yourself? And you've got three minutes, please.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Jeff DeBonis, Chairman, Zone Board of Appeals. So I want to tell you again, thank you so much for all the work you've been putting into this, everyone. I noticed you addressed the window signage issue that I had, the issue with the signage above the second floor. Great job. What I actually would like to ask is if you would be able to present in front of the Board of Appeals and get some more input from the other members.
Oh, I'd love to.
Okay. So we don't have to tie up the Planning Board's time discussing that, but I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you for addressing that. I'd like to get a little bit more from the other members and see where we can go from there. There's just a few things that I think we can definitely improve on, things that were just a little bit ambiguous, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay? Anyone else? If, yeah, if you wouldn't mind, that'd be great. I know it'd be a longer list a little bit. There is someone online with a hand up. Okay. Michael Murray, if you can put him...
Yep.
Mr. Murray, if you can hear me, please introduce yourself, your address, and go for it.
Hello, Michael Murray, I'm representative for Murray Hills. I live at 2 Hanaway in Burlington. Again, I would like to compliment the committee for all the work that they've done. They've done a great job. We've had quite a bit of back and forth with comments and suggestions, and they have done quite a bit to try to incorporate that. And if they're incorporating it from other sources, I'm sure it's not an easy task. They have incorporated a lot of my comments. I still think there are a few things... I still think there are a few things to iron out. Nothing that I don't think can be done, but I do have concerns about the existing signage and the regulations that would require that to change. There is language in there that dictates it. I think it's a little too harsh. I understand that, you know, as a town, we'd like to see those things changes, but I think some of it puts an undue burden on businesses that have been there. New businesses that come in, new signage, has to meet the regulation. I'm fine with that. Even if it's a change in name, something like that, that's fine. But for an existing tenant, if they just want to, say, change the color of their sign, I don't know that that's necessarily warranted in the way that I interpret it. That would require them to meet the new regulations. I also have concerns about, for some of these existing buildings, if, even if it is a new tenant that comes in, and the building does not accommodate a location that would be allowed, most likely that would mean that the sign would not be an allowed sign, in which case, they couldn't even get a variance for it. So, I'd like to see if there was a way to add language that would protect that. Not that it would be given just because someone didn't want to meet it, but more so that they couldn't meet the requirements. Those are like my, those are basically my major concerns that I am having communicating with the committee, and they've been very responsive to all of the comments. So, I think everything else I have can be ironed out before this goes to town meeting.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Murray. All right, anyone else?
I'm seeing no one else online.
Seeing none. May have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to continue.
Did I forget anybody? Okay, good.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to continue this public hearing, planning board meeting of December 5th, 2024.
Second.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
LaRue?
Yes.
Impemba?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
Okay, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you on December 5th. Great job. Thank you, folks. Well-deserved applause. Okay. Let's go with item C. This is a public hearing amendment to Article 3, Districts, Article 4, Use Regulations, and Article 10, Miscellaneous and Special Regulations on the zoning bylaw. This is allowing recreational marijuana dispensaries in a new marijuana retail zoning overlay district, submitted by Alex Rutfield, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5, on behalf of Will Seaguard. Okay, just for everyone's benefit, this is a zoning, this is a zoning change. This is not an allowed change. That's the general bylaw. That goes before the selectmen and then town meeting. So, this is not to say, should we or shouldn't we? This is where you put it, if at some point it's approved by town meeting. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Mr. Seaguard.
Hello, Will Seaguard, Precinct 7. And so, I just want to start off by sort of reiterating what you said, Chairman, and what we discussed last night at the info session, which was, the goal of this is not to introduce marijuana to Burlington. It's already here. And so, we'd like to just acknowledge that fact and make it the biggest positive for the town that it possibly can be. And so, this zoning is attempting to do that, so that we can tax it and regulate it, and hopefully, get some of those financial benefits from it. And so, I know during our last meeting here, it was sort of deferred to see what the sentiment was. I know from our info session last night, and then also discussions online with a lot of town meeting members, there is a lot of, you know, willingness to at least bring it forward. And so, our goal is to get all of the details of the zoning ironed out, and make sure that everybody's on the same page, so that we can make it the best it can possibly be. So, that's where we'd like to start. I don't know if it makes sense to get into all of the presentations now. I know that you all have a lot on the agenda tonight, so I'm going to defer to you and see where you'd like to go from here.
So, this is zoning, so I think you're, we'd have to assume that it's approved at some point, whether that's January or some way else. So, I think maybe that's the way we go, just to kind of go from a zoning language standpoint in the map.
So, we could pull up the map, and great.
Again, for the folks at home, this is not something that is being proposed by the town. This is an individual through a town meeting member that this is being proposed.
So, currently, as it stands right now, we do have medical marijuana zoning in place, and that would be allowable, provided it fits within the buffer zones in all of the purple areas that you see on the map, both there in the view and then elsewhere on the zoning map. What we are proposing is to shrink that down and put it into a more traditional retail area, which is what this is. It operates a lot more like a package store than it does an industrial manufacturer. And so, we're trying to just acknowledge that fact and say, potentially, these are the areas, based on discussions with town meeting members, other folks who live in the town, and just acknowledging that these are already the high-traffic areas. And so, just trying to capitalize on the people who are already coming to our town, or already here, outrunning errands, doing whatever, and already on the road or in those areas. So, yeah. And it's, the overlay encompasses everywhere that has the black slashes through it. So, again, it's primarily strip mall areas, other retail areas, right around Middlesex Turnpike, Mall Road, and then off of 128, right on Cambridge Street.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Staff, any comments?
I have a question, if I may.
Sure.
So, have you, so have you reached out to any of the property owners? Do you have feedback from any of them?
I've spoken to a couple. I mean, a lot of them say, when the town does whatever they're going to do, then we can discuss it further. They don't really want to discuss hypotheticals when it's not done. So, yeah, that was sort of a lot of the feedback that I was getting. I've spoken to several that are very interested. I mean, a lot of these have a lot of vacancy. I don't know how much you've looked into some of these areas, but some of them are upwards of 50% vacant. So, I think they're looking for businesses to come in and fill those spaces, and also hopefully, bring other traffic into those areas. And so, I think if we are trying to use other businesses as a draw, why can't we use this business when all of this, not all, but many of the surrounding towns right around us have these, and they're collecting tax revenue from this? So, why can't we?
All right. Thank you. Let's, that'll stop?
I think for now, thank you.
Okay, yep, sure. Great. Let's start, Mr. Impemba.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the purple areas you're saying have marijuana?
Currently, you, technically, you could apply and open in those purple areas. Nobody.
Recreation?
No.
No, as medical.
So, where is recreation allowed?
The recreational would be condensed down into the area that's.
Where is it currently?
It's not anywhere currently.
That, I think everybody needs to be perfectly clear.
Yeah.
That's kind of been a little bit, I don't know, it's been a little unclear.
Yep.
Everyone's always said, well, marijuana has been used, and people don't realize it's, medical uses, not recreational uses. So, currently in Burlington, there is no recreational.
Correct.
Use.
Legally. I mean, you can have it, right? Exactly. And be sold, yes.
Right, right, right. Okay. I, you know, I guess I'll reserve some of my comments for the future.
Thank you. Mr. Covino.
I had a weird hypothetical question for staff, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Say that there's a recreational marijuana facility, and say this goes in, and the recreational marijuana facility goes in, and I'm not sure what it is, but say the zoning requires 1,000 feet from any residential area. So, if there's already a recreational marijuana use in someplace, does that mean a residential area could not go in if it were being within the buffer zone? Or how does that work? It's, I just, that weird thing just popped into my mind, sorry, but I had to ask the question.
That's fine, Member Covino. So, there are, so if you recall, when we were, when the state first started allowing medical marijuana, we put medical marijuana as in allowed use in certain areas with buffer restrictions.
Right.
And so, those same, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Will, that the same buffer restrictions for medical would apply? I don't, do you recall, I don't have it in front of me.
Yes, it's, I believe it can't directly abut residential, and I know that, and then it cannot be within 1,000 feet of a school or anywhere else that children gather. And similarly, it would have to be 1,000 feet, I believe, because we're proposing two. So, they could not be within 1,000 feet of each other.
Okay. My question was vice versa, though, Liz.
So.
If the marijuana facility is already there, Liz, could a, does that prohibit a residential area going in?
No.
Know what I'm saying?
No, it does not prohibit a residential.
Well, then, even if it's in the buffer zone? In other words, the recreational marijuana facility is there, buffer zone is, for hypothetical purposes, 1,000 feet, does that mean you can't build a residential area within 1,000 feet of a recreational marijuana use?
I think so. I would have to defer to legal, but I don't, so I don't know if one, I don't know if it goes both ways. I'm going to say on the record.
No, I mean, my guess is it prohibits marijuana use from going in, but it wouldn't prohibit it.
That's, it wouldn't prohibit an R O use from going in, right? That's what I.
What if, what if the recreational marijuana use, Joe, is already there? Does it prohibit the residential?
I think it's a prohibition on the marijuana use going in, and within the residential, within a residential.
It's not a prohibition on the residential use, even if.
So, if.
Yep.
So, if the residential marijuana use is already in existence, you could put a residential project in next to the recreational marijuana use? If it already existed?
I would say the prohibition goes in, is, it applies to the marijuana.
It's mainly on the business. It's not really the other way around, is my understanding.
If you wanted to pull a, I'd say you probably want a legal opinion, but it's most likely, it's a prohibition.
So, legal opinion says that, which I probably agree with. Ms. LaRue.
Just following up on Ernie's question. If, say, a recreational marijuana facility went in, and this is entirely likely to happen if the Mall Road initiative passes, then after the recreational marijuana facility opens, a housing development is built, and it's within the $1,000. Buffer. Okay, so that, suppose that can go in. I think probably it can. What happens, though, if this recreational marijuana facility should change ownership? Or become a, be a different company? That company goes away, a different company wants to come in. Can it stay there? Because now the company is coming in, I don't know.
So, I would say that I, this is first, from my perspective, from our perspective, it's a, we have special permit use that would be, the special permit would be issued to the current owner. I don't know.
If it changed, they'd have to come back. They'd have to come back for a new special permit, and we would not be able to allow it if it was within 1,000 feet.
I would, again, have to get a legal opinion on that, and I also.
I hadn't thought of it. It's a good point that Ernie brings up. It's not something I had contemplated.
Great. Yep. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry.
All right, no, we'll go right back over to Ms. LaRue.
Okay. Well, along those same lines, I wanted to ask if any of these cross-hatched areas, how close they are to residential? And I don't know if I should be asking Will, or if I should be asking staff. Are there any of these areas that are abutting residential?
So, any of the tan, the kind of, any of the tan parcels, the lighter tan, almost yellow parcels, those are residentially zoned parcels in the town.
So, there's just that one spot.
It's this, and then this is all here, where this is where Target is, that this is what this plaza is.
So, on the other side of the Target Plaza, there are residences. So.
So, it can't, so it can't have.
So, I'm going to say I have a problem with this abutting residential. So, we are going to have to take another look at this map and see if these properties are abutting residential, along with Seven Springs and the homes behind Target.
For 1,000 feet, yeah.
Not something we're going to resolve tonight, but something we need to look at. And then, the other comment I have is, stepping back, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. We have a moratorium in place. That is in the general bylaw. It is placed, it was placed there because the town voted in 2016, I think, against recreational marijuana, 17? 2017? Okay. Against recreational marijuana. That was a while ago, but we don't know that the townspeople have changed their mind about that. And we've talked about that at previous meetings. I personally would not feel comfortable moving forward with something unless we received a clear indication from the voters of Burlington that they have changed their minds about this. In addition, the cart before the horse thing is, it would also be very inappropriate for the planning board to zone for use that is prohibited in the general bylaw. That has to change first. The general bylaw says you can't have recreational marijuana. So, who are we to say, well, yeah, but you can put it here? No, you can't. So, this is sort of backwards, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaRue. The only comments I had was, again, to your point of the residential. So, it does look like it's actually abutting residential right there. And I know there was, previously, there was a different definition of a abutting, wasn't it? Was it somewhere, we talked about the center of the entrance, or is it? Because on a regular one, it would be, abutting means abutting, means actually.
Do you want to take this?
Yeah, so that was, so I think when this was first submitted in consideration for September Town Meeting, there was language in the submitted article, that it was from the building. As far as taking a measurement of, you know, it's a 1,000-foot buffer, you take it from the building to the parcel. And we kind of had got over that at the time in preparation for September Town Meeting, that typically, when doing land use policy, that you want to take that buffer, and you take it from the edge of the parcel, and that's a much kind of easier
Defined.
way to define what a buffer is, versus, you know, taking it, well, you take it from the front entrance. You take it from the middle of the building, you take it from the parking lot. Like, where would you take it from? You can kind of change the numbers by considerable amount, depending on where you put it within a parcel, versus, okay, from the, any point within this parcel, there's a 1,000-foot, almost like a circle that goes out, and anything in that circle is considered within that radius.
Is that the way this is written?
So, that's.
That has been changed, so that's the way this is written. So, if that was to, if kind of moving forward and kind of seeing that within, you know, just take, for example, like if it was this parcel, that there be a 1,000-foot circle, and anything within that 1,000 feet, if it touches that parcel, even by one foot, that parcel would be considered within that 1,000-foot buffer, 500-foot, whatever would be appropriate for that use.
So, in this map here, there's the parcel over to the right, there's a parcel over to the left, that are directly abutting residential. Looks like streets there, right? Residents. Residential streets?
Yeah.
So, that would have to be, and one is pretty close, you could probably eyeball it. So, that really can't happen anyway, right? So it's kind of a non-compliance of the zoning, the map is, so would that just, you couldn't approve that, right? Because it'd be out of compliance. How do you address something like that, where...
We have to fix the map.
Okay.
I think.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you. So, let's go to the pub, okay, I'm sorry. Did I, did I not, you, you ready, ready to finish?
Yeah.
To wrap it up from the planning board, it's Vice Chairman Sutherland. Thank you.
I would second everything my fellow members have said, that it feels a little premature to be going forward with zoning changes. And I think on top of, it's very, very important that we understand how the people of the town would support or not support this. On top of that, I think, you're not gonna be surprised by my comment, still waiting for a cost-benefit analysis, in, in terms of not just what are the tax revenues, but what are the costs? I mean, there needs to be some social programs in place to deal with possible addiction. There's gonna be training, and that has to be done by the police. Do we need additional enforcement by police? What are we gonna put in for some of those social programs? Um, I know you have some stats in some of your presentations, that marijuana use has gone down over the last 10 years, however, the last two years marijuana use has actually gone up with teens. So, um, you know, I think understanding what are some of the social programs we'll put in place to support that, as well as just understanding what's the cost to regulate this? I think it's unfair to equate this to alcohol use, because there are a lot of those policies and training, and regulatory costs already in place. What will have to be set up administratively in order to deal with that revenue? How is that revenue gonna be distributed? I think there's, there's so much unknown in terms of what this would cost to set this up. It would take, you noted that towns, there are towns surrounding that already have this, so knowing that there's already competition, what does that scale look like for us to get the tax revenue? I just think there's way too much missing information for me to even feel comfortable discussing the possibility of zoning happening. And so that's a lot of information I would be looking for in the next...
Okay, thank you. All right, now we'll go to the public hearing, and we'll go to the folks that are here. So, um, what we'd like you to have you do is to come up, sign your, sign your name up there, and your address, and then over to the microphone. Again, we'll talk, we're looking at three minutes, a person, and try not to repeat what somebody else has said, okay? So, anybody from the public? We got one right there in the back.
How are you? Oops. Like, what's my line?
Yeah.
Mark Woods, Precinct 7, 12 Eugene Road.
Okay, thank you.
Um, well, I guess you've, you've kind of hinted that you, this is the cart before the horse, so I think we have a long way to go before we consider recreational marijuana. There's a lot of things in place to prohibit the use of it. I try to be fair and, and read as much as I can about the subject, and I just finished reading an article from the Hayden Benny Ford Clinic, and it's, um, pretty revealing. Most of the people that they have dealt with, they, 750 people that they've dealt with who were being treated for either drug or alcohol abuse, started with marijuana. So I consider it a gateway drug. I don't feel, is there marijuana in town? Sure. There's probably cocaine and heroin, too. That doesn't mean we should say, well, let's open a facility to facilitate these types of materials. I know there's alcohol, we sell alcohol, it's legal. I know alcohol is a huge problem in the United States. It's been here forever. I don't know if it's ever gonna go away. I wasn't too thrilled when we approved those additional liquor licenses in town, because as my parents told me a long time ago, two wrongs don't make a right. And, you know, the article of, well, it'll bring in revenue, well, if that's the case, we should have approved the Kia dealership for Herb Chambers. That would have brought in revenue, too. So, um, I don't like being told, if you do this, we'll get more money. One of the reasons I like Burlington is I think we have a lot of reasonable people in town. We look at things thoughtfully and carefully, and, um, I've just read too many articles where children's brains, if they start using marijuana, don't develop properly, and it could lead to psychosis. So I would be against putting in a recreational marijuana facility in the town of Burlington. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, why don't you come up? Why don't we do it this way? Why don't you come up, speak, and then you could write down your name, and then we can rotate through people, if there's a number of people that want to...
My name is Bert Valbona. I live on 7 Marigold in Precinct 7. I wasn't asked what I thought about it, so I, you might have reached out to my other neighbors. But I echo everything that the, the previous gentleman said. A couple of things I do wanna know is, I do have a second home, and it's nearby, a retail marijuana facility, and you tend to get a lot of in-and-out traffic. Everybody's in and out all the time. Sometimes there's capacity limits, so you have lines outside. You have noise from stereo, you know, car radios going off, people waiting in the parking lot. It's just kind of a different type of business. The other thing that I do wanna mention, too, is, having been a banker at Bank of America for 38 years, recently retired, there's a lot of anti-money laundering, things that you need to consider, given the fact that there's a, a difference between federal law and Commonwealth law. It has to primarily be a cash business. So that presents risks on the types of people that you may be dealing with, and it also presents risks with respect to dealing with large sums of cash. And, you know, where do they go at night? Are they walking? Does, you know, do you need more police? You know, is there more crime that's gonna be around? People waiting around for these large cash movements to happen? So it is something that you, you have to consider, and, and, you know, so I'm, I'm against it. I'm against retail marijuana, everything this gentleman previous to me said. You know, I had a mother die of lung cancer, I hate smoking, you know, everything is just bad, but, um, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, and congratulations on your retirement.
All right, thank you.
Yep. If you wouldn't mind sliding over when you, when you write that, we can bring up the next one. Yep, that'd be great. Thank you. Yep. Come on up, Betsy. And then if you, just move the microphone a little closer.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Betsy Hughes, Precinct 7, Town Meeting Member, 11 Marigold. I have a couple of comments. One is, um, with all due respect to Mr. Seagard, he is a resident of Burlington, but he's also part-owner and direct, in charge of sales and business development for Fresh Connection Brands, which is a marijuana wholesale business. So he has a, not only, he has a business interest in this discussion. My experience in Burlington is every time anybody from a business comes before us, they disclose that they're from a business, which is, you know, being open and about that. And there is obviously a bit of a bias, so I, I think, I'd like to recommend that when Mr. Seagard does this in the future, he put his business out there, because it is relevant to this discussion. The other thing is that a number of years ago, when marijuana came up initially, it came up because a marijuana site was gonna be on Blanchard Road, which is down the street from one, from the area where the red slashes are. We had a number of residents who will abut this property that he's talking about, come up and talk to us, as well as corporations and developers. The corporate, on Blanchard, the corporate organizations, they, they are high-end corporate businesses. They did not want retail marijuana anywhere near them. They didn't want their boards coming through a street where there was a retail marijuana shop. Some said that they would not, they would, other places would not actually locate, the developers were concerned, because they had gotten feedback that they would lose business from corporations, because they didn't wanna be near those kinds of businesses. So, in the context of that part of Burlington, it is a very high-end corporate environment and residential, and those organizations have already spoken, and they're not gonna change their minds. They don't want their employees going out at lunchtime, walking on the nice new sidewalk we now have into the conservation area, walking over and getting some gummies, popping them in, and coming back high. It is a big issue in corporations, and they don't wanna be anywhere near it. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Betsy, are those in meeting minutes from the corporations from the last time they came in?
Um, I believe so. We had the president of Datacom, and then Duffy Development was also there.
Yep, great, thank you.
Chairman, can I elaborate just a little?
Mr. Mempel.
Yeah, just because I, it was something I was gonna address earlier, but I reserved, but it was, it's appropriate here, is that, you know, through the years that I've been on the boards, the 34 years I've been on the boards, we've, we've managed to draw in a higher, the highest-quality restaurants, the highest-quality corporations, the best businesses, and I, I attribute that to the fact that we've been very selective about what we've, what we've allowed to come in. We've, we prevented a Dave and Buster's from coming in, because we didn't think that that was what we wanted Burlington's face to look like. We prevented the box retailers from coming in, and consequently, over the years, and sifting through and picking and choosing who we wanted as users in the town, I think we've been able to, as, as a consequence of that, we've been able to get the best restaurants and the best businesses in the town. I don't, I, I caution everybody, and I, we touched, I touched on this a little in the last time, is I caution people about looking at the, what the, you know, what the tax revenues are, because the tax revenues don't tell the whole story. There's a lot of infrastructure that goes along with that that's not seen, there's a lot of potential loss of the best restaurants around, because they don't wanna be in a, in a town that, that's, that's taking in just any kind of user and every kind of user they can get their hands on, just to raise revenues. I drive down, you know, coming back from the Cape, and this is what is a cry on my side all the time, is I, we don't allow billboards, but there's a lot of towns that do allow billboards, and every time I drive by, there's one billboard that says, "Get your cannabis at this place in this town." I don't want Burlington to be on a billboard to say, "Get your cannabis in Burlington," because I think that type of portrayal of a town is gonna drive the businesses that we've spent our whole lifetimes trying to bring into this town. I think we don't wanna drive those businesses out and prevent them continuing to come in. So I think, I caution every time I hear this, and I only bring it up because I, I just heard it here, but I also heard it in a letter that was sent in to us about the revenue, the revenue, the revenue. Well, you know, we, we're gonna get revenue in all of these locations. It's not a question of Burlington having a hard time getting businesses to come in here and pay taxes. We, we have plenty of businesses paying taxes, and I think we still need to be very selective about what we bring in, but I think it was, I only wanted to say it, because it was kind of addressed almost exactly what Betsy was saying, and what some of the other speakers were.
Thank you, Mr. Mempel. Anyone else in the public wanna speak, please? Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Shari Ellis, Town Meeting Member, zoning bylaw review committee chair, and 3 Hickory Lane, if you want the address, I'll fill it out later. I'm here, 'cause you, you know me as a process procedure and word person, and we're in charge of the zoning bylaws. This proposal came before us, excuse me, last time for September, and we made some recommendations and changes, and I'm specifically speaking of the actual language of the bylaw. I'm not gonna speak to other things people have spoken to that, I'm actually speaking to the actual bylaw itself. And this iteration came through, and there were some changes to this. However, there are many things that still are unclear, not formatted, many questions that we need legal opinions on. When a proponent comes before your board, before our board, we expect them to do the work to prove that whatever process is coming for us is ready to go to town meeting. And I feel that this has not been done with this. There's four pages at the end of this zoning bylaw that is additional requirements, that doesn't have any numbering system to it. The building inspector could not enforce this. There's no, it's four pages of paragraph form. So, things like that, to me, are that this is not ready. It doesn't mean that it can't be ready at a future time, if the homework is done, as the members here have noted. Do we even know that the town residents who voted this down want it again? Maybe they do, we don't know. But until that such time, and until, to me, some of these questions, the legal question I've been asking since last time to this time, you know, once a facility is in here, can somebody else move into it next? We haven't heard a legal opinion on that. And until such time, I don't, that's just gonna prohibit, or not prohibit, it's gonna intimidate someone coming in. So you're kind of losing your revenue from that possible stream. But, and I brought these up here, so I could flip through these really quick, just other issues. As far as the language goes, there's, there's duplicate sections in here. So, just the language, to me, is not ready, and I don't think, your next public hearing is in two weeks, of which time then that needs to be the final version draft for town meeting. I see it as a very high hurdle to get there in two weeks, and I certainly, from my perspective on the language, would recommend that this not go to town meeting, however that happens to be done. Not that it can't go at a future time, if all the homework is done, but that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, as she's putting her name and address down, anyone else from the public wanna speak for or against? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Kazangin, Precinct 7. I live at 17 Marigold Way in Burlington. I was here in August when Will presented to the planning board and made my thoughts known to the board, because at that time, I had reminded the board that we had voted on this a number of years ago, two, in 2017, I believe. And at that time, the town had voted by two-thirds vote that they did not want marijuana in the town. The thing I want to bring to your attention, and I need a, an answer from Will in this regard, was something in the informational session last night, which talked about, he cited that there were six alcohol licenses in the town, which would mean, he also said that there would be room for two marijuana facilities. So my question is now, not only are we worried about one marijuana facility, but now we're gonna worry about two? And my feeling is that, I, I hate the word "no," but my comment to Will is, what do you understand or not understand about the word "no"? Is it "N" or is it "O"?
So Cynthia, that's an appropriate question, so, and all questions will come through the chair, so...
Thank you.
We won't answer that one. Thank you. Okay? Anyone else in the room wanna speak for or against this? Seeing none. We have people up on the, online, couple of hands raised. Let's start, person in the center there with the headphones, I don't have a name.
Yep, that's Alex Rodfield, he's the Town Meeting Member who is...
Okay, let's go with Alex.
Okay, Alex, you have a request to unmute.
Hi, everyone. So, as Caleb just said, I'm the Town Meeting Member who submitted this. I'd like to apologize for not being in person, I've got a new infant, which is also why I have the headphones. Anyway, so I'd like to first point out a couple of things. You know, one thing that's been said is like, we want an updated vote from the townspeople. Well, that was brought up, you know, back in September, and, you know, I rethought, I thought, okay, that actually sounds like a good idea, how can we get that to happen? The proponent doesn't have the resources to make that happen, I don't have the resource to make that happen. Barbara had informally brought up the idea of, you know, having like a survey at the election day, which would have ignored mail-in voters, but, you know, would have been a pretty good representation. But, you know, I fell out of the loop a bit in October, and then when I came back, all of a sudden, not only did, you know, just nothing really happened, but the subcommittee that was supposed to look into it ended up, you guys essentially said, no, we're not even gonna bother the subcommittee yet. So, we kind of had an impression... So we kind of had an impression that, you know, we were gonna have some resources to look into what the people thought, and we didn't get that. So like, you know, the next idea would be, you know, like maybe a ballot referendum in April, but you're gonna get maybe 20% of the town on that, it's not gonna represent, you know, what the actual town thinks. So while the idea of like, you know, getting the people to vote on it sounds politically nice and theoretically great, actually getting it to happen in any reasonable amount of time before like the 2028 presidential election, it just doesn't seem plausible at all. And, you know, you're worried about putting the cart before the horse, we're going, you know, doing, talking the zoning before the bylaw. We do have changes in the general bylaw going as well. And, you know, but, and so last I checked, the general bylaw change only needs a majority, while a zoning bylaw would need two-thirds. So the odds of the zoning getting passed without the general bylaw is basically nil. But there is actually a chance, and by putting them both at the same time, we reduce that chance, but still there, that we end up allowing dispensaries, but not having any property that allows it, which would kind of be a weird middle zone. So we are doing our best there to kind of, you know, we avoid the cart before the horse situation. And it's also very unlikely that, you know, if, you know, hordes of the town are against it, the zoning is gonna pass by two-thirds by town meeting. So we are, there's still gonna be plenty of public input, as you can see now. And on a smaller note, I'd like to point out that more businesses might be concerned about people running to a store, taking the product, getting high, and then going back to work. One of the big regulations that makes that a lot more difficult is you can't actually take the product on at the retailer's site, that's a statewide regulation. So it makes it very difficult. Someone would have to, you know, in the span of a single lunch break, leave their office, go there, buy the product, go somewhere else, use the product, and then come back to work, which is extremely unlikely to happen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ruffield. Go ahead, one quick question.
Who has the ability to put something on a voting ballot?
So I have looked into this, so it is the select board that has to do it. I know that I'd had some questions from town meeting members that in the past, there had been non-binding referendum votes that had been taken at town meeting in the past. Our current, our current town council has deemed those to be not legal. So she has said that, you know, that if it's not on the warrant, you can't vote on it, even, you know, as a, you know, a provisional vote. So the, so it would go through, the select board decides what would go on any ballot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Looks like Mr. Kelly is, got his hand raised?
Yep. Jack, he's got a senate request.
There you go, Mr. Kelly.
Okay.
Thank you, we can hear you, three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Jack Kelly, a town meeting member of precinct seven, and a direct abbot to the Crossroad Shopping Center, which is one of the properties where the overlay is being sought. As a follow-up or in addition to Member Cavino's question, which I thought was well thought, if a property that's under the zone is not being, if it's rezoned, but it is not being used with a marijuana facility and residence is built next to it, would that be automatically struck from the overlay zone? The answer is going to be, we'll have to check with council. That's fine. But what I've got to say is that, you know, Burlington is business friendly, we have more business than most any other town with a population under $30,000. But Burlington can't be all things to all people. As Member Pembah had just said, you know, we've made some very good choices as we worked hard with our zoning for the last 50 years or more. And yeah, we don't have any big box stores. We made that choice 40 or 50 years ago when a developer wanted to put a Home Depot down where Wegmans and Lifetime and some very nice high-tech businesses are that create very good, well-paying jobs. Big box stores just don't fit our long-term business plan, you know. We don't need a Home Depot, there's a law that's just across the line in Reuben, three miles from where you're sitting right now. You know, high-paying jobs oftentimes are much more important than the revenue we might get from a project. We need to look more than at just the revenue, and Member Pembah said the same thing. Tomorrow, you'll still get your Amazon package, even though we don't have an Amazon distribution center in Burlington. There's one right next door in Wilmington, there's a huge warehouse 25 miles away in North Andover. You know, we just can't be all things to all people, and we shouldn't even try. Is a marijuana dispensary something that we really need in Burlington? When there are dispensaries close by in Reuben and Bill Ricker and Arlington? Burlington doesn't need one, but the question for me is, do the citizens of Burlington want one? Is a marijuana dispensary an integral part of our business plan? I don't think so. Our plans for Burlington have proved that Burlington is an economic generator for this area, and I don't know whether it'll drive other business away. I know that we've gone to great lengths to supply and approve amenities that the CEOs of companies with good-paying jobs want. I don't know if a marijuana dispensary is an amenity that the CEO wants his employees to go out and use at lunchtime. But I agree, let's ask the citizens of Burlington if they want one, just like we did several years ago. I agree that voters should make the decision, and all those who choose to vote in April, which is the first time we can do it, I would hope that the selectmen, the board, select board will put that as a ballot question for the town at large.
Okay.
You know, several people have given their opinions, Mr. Seaguard has given his arguments, but to me, the most meaningful opinion will be that of the voters at large. So I agree, let's do that and revisit it if and when the citizens tell us they want one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no one else online, and seeing no one else here, do I have a motion? Again, these are continued to our next meeting, and the public hearings are continued to be open.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this public hearing to the planning board meeting of December 5th, 2024.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Given that it's unlikely we're gonna have answers to any of the questions that have been raised in two weeks' time, does it make sense to delay this for two weeks, or does it make sense to do what we did at our October meeting when this came before us? Didn't we, did we?
I believe it was our, actually our August meeting.
It was our August meeting.
Except September town meeting.
We postponed it.
Postponed it till?
Until, until October.
October, and then we'll postpone this to January.
Well, we could, what I'm asking is, if we are in agreement that we want to hear from the townspeople before we move forward with this, number one, and number two, we can't move forward with this until the general bylaw is changed, because we can't zone for something that's not allowed, I would suggest maybe we should postpone until February.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor for December. Do you want to take that back, or?
It's honestly?
It was a seconded.
It was as a seconded, so it's all up to, it's all up to you guys. So a new motion can be made.
That's correct.
I would like to make a motion that we postpone to our first February meeting, which is February.
Wait one minute, didn't have this one, hold on.
It's February, yeah?
Oh, yes.
February 6th.
February 6th, 2025. If no one wants to second it, we can go back to the other one.
Is there a second?
No one wants to second it? Okay.
The discussion.
Yeah, we can discuss before a second.
The only reason why I'm hesitating is because this is the first time we've opened it for public discussion.
Okay, that's fair.
And I, I agree, it's not, I don't foresee having the answers I need to be able to support for January town meeting. I just don't know if we need to give another opportunity for the public or not.
Well, the public has another opportunity. If we delay till February, they have opportunity in February.
True. Okay.
So there's a motion, is there a second?
I will second.
Go call.
Chairman Gaffney.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
And Pembah.
Yes.
Cavino.
Why not? Yes.
Five zero, okay. Well, this goes to February 6th, we said.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate the time and consideration, I know, there's a lot, so I appreciate it.
It's a big one, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, everybody, for attending that came for that. We appreciate all of your inputs. Item 70 is a public hearing, amendment to Article 3 districts, Article 4 use regulations in Article 13, overlay districts of the zoning bylaw, the creation of a mixed-use middle housing overlay district submitted by the planning board. We got one by us.
The first one that we've done.
So this is an actual zoning bylaw that we ourselves are putting forth through January town meeting.
Sure. So, members of the board, since this is the first public hearing that's officially open, I'm probably gonna go be a little bit repetitive, and then I'm gonna go into speaking about the changes that have been made based upon the discussion we had at our last meeting. So this is a proposal for a middle housing overlay district. So this was, we've been kind of talking about this for some time now, the board has, has been looking into this, and like, what are the mechanisms, how can we make this really happen? And what ended up happening is I, you know, we talked about a 40R district, which is a smart growth overlay district, and so I kind of took that model and modified it to what, you know, what the town center overlay kind of is. So, let me see, okay. So, again, what's our existing situation? We have two main housing types in town, we have single-family residential, and then we have multifamily properties that have 20-plus units. In 2022, we did a housing needs assessment with MAPC. The key finding was that our existing housing stock needs to diversify to meet the needs of current and future residents. So where is the middle housing overlay district being proposed? It's in the town center. It is the dark purple parcels, so those are parcels on Terry Ave, parcels on Grant Ave, and then parcels at the corner of Cambridge Street and Kenny Ave. That's the masked glass site, to those of us who've been around a while. So what is, what is in this zoning district, what are the requirements? So we are requiring it be mixed use. Everything needs to be mixed use, so you need to have commercial on the first floor at a three-story maximum building height, and above that commercial, you can have 12 units an acre of housing. It has to comply with our, with our inclusionary zoning bylaw, meaning that 15% of the units need to be affordable, deed-restricted affordable. And it adds additional development standards that will be amended and added to the town center design rules and regulations that really enhance the public realm, you know, more compact development emphasizes walkability, all those good things. So one of the other things is thinking about property owners and, you know, what they can do, what this does for them. It doesn't make them non-compliant, there's no pre-existing non-conformity that is made as part of this overlay. Property owners can choose to develop in accordance with the existing, with the middle housing overlay district, the existing central business district, or their base zoning district. So it's just providing them with additional options. What are the benefits? Emphasis on fine-grained building and street form. So you're producing, you know, creating more walkable, attractive town center, provides a softer transition between existing commercial properties and single-family neighborhoods. As you'll notice, the location is all a budding, single-family neighborhood, so this is kind of, it's a softer transition than from, you know, commercial directly next to residential. You know, this is the type of form that provides traffic calming, it's a park-and-walk development style, so the emphasis is, you know, the parking lot for businesses will be behind the building, leaving the street to have parallel parking and wide sidewalks and, you know, cafe seating and all those things, you know, creating a clear definition of public space, it's really kind of placemaking in your zoning, requiring placemaking in your zoning, and it creates a new third place, and that's a term that's often used where, you know, the third place is the place that is separate from where you live and where you work, the third place is kind of where you gather, meet people, interact. And so that is what we're looking to do here. These are some visuals, some examples of what the design could look like, what we are kind of, what I used as my inspiration. And the, so this is kind of it. What I did want to go over was talk about what was changed in the bylaw last time, from our last meeting. We, we have reached out to property owners, we reached out to Mike Murray, who is, I think he's still on?
Yes.
Yes. And Barbara and I had a really good discussion with him, because, you know, he has a perspective that we don't, he develops buildings, so he knows exactly kind of the things that, you know, where there could be problems in our zoning that would prohibit what we want from actually happening to happen. So one of those things is that there is a provision that 70%, oh, no, first one is that we have the project, the gross floor area dedicated to non-residential uses within a mixed-use project. It used to be 49, we are changing that to 50%. Don't know why the 49 was in there, didn't really make sense, quick fix there. The next one, I believe, has to do with glass.
Which I thought was high.
Yes, so, and it was really helpful, Mike Murray kind of said, okay, well, you know, the, it states, "The ground floor commercial and retail usage shall have a minimum of 70% glass, inclusive of the framing system." The idea being that in order to create a comfortable walking experience, and you want to have the buildings be permeable, it's not comfortable to walk by brick walls for a while, it's not pleasant. However, you know, as a developer, bring into perspective, once you, you know, we want to have, it's a commercial, it's a town center, so we want to have, you know, clapboards and brick, and 70%, you know, seems like something that would be more, for a more modern style, if you're really looking for that modernist vibe, that's what you would have for 70%. So I've updated it to 50, because I think that's more reasonable. It, it still meets the essence of what we're looking for in walkability, but it, you know, it allows a little more design flexibility.
So is, on the, on the glass piece of it, is that, is it, is it basically the same as the overlay, which would mean, if it's more than a certain amount of glass, it's gotta be broken up by panes or?
Right.
That would, yeah, that would, this would allow that, yes.
Allow it or mandate it?
It was, so.
It's a shell, so it looks like a minimum.
It's a shell.
A shell is, means you have to do it.
Yes.
Which is must.
50% glass.
Yeah, you have to have 50% glass. Is it required to be broken up? Is the question.
Oh, I see.
Okay, so then.
Because even 50% glass, if it's just glass, is just gonna look.
You could paint.
Not the look you're gonna want.
So the next, I think the next phrase from, in that section, so, 854276, it's on the third page.
Eight four.
E.
Eight four.
854276, the numbering system is out of control. Eight-five-four-two-seven-six. The numbering system is out of control here. However, um, I think it gets to what you're talking to. The extent possible of glazing should be subdivided to reinforce pedestrian scale, protecting fenestration in the public way with awnings, canopies, operable windows and doors onto balconies, you know. So I think it does, um, kind of encourage what you, what you're looking for.
Says glazing should be subdivided to reinforce pedestrian scale. What?
Yeah, I don't know what that means.
I think it is what, I think it's what you're saying.
Well, let's see it in a way that we understand.
English.
So everyone understands it, right? I mean, because it doesn't really, what the piece that I don't really, yeah, is to reinforce the pedestrian scale. I don't know what that really means.
I think it, it's again, trying to emphasize that.
So from the pedestrians.
Can look.
Looking at it, it's, it's gonna look like it's not all glass? Is that?
No, they want it, they.
You want it to.
You want it to be, you want it to be see-through. You want it to be glass.
To be see-through.
You want.
I, I understand, but it, but it doesn't look like it's all one piece of glass.
So I think.
Other words, from pedestrian scale.
So what you're saying is you would like phraseology in here that would, um, require that the glass be broken.
Well, I think we, in the overlay, there is similar language that, correct?
I'll double-check.
Yeah.
I'll double-check. Um, but again, that's what, um, Mike Murray talked about. He said, you know, when, you know, you think about the True North Plaza, they have brick on the bottom, then they have glazing, and then they have brick on the top, and that, that is already out of line with the seventy percent class.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Um, so I can look into it. I know exactly what you're, what you're saying, Joy. I will definitely look into it.
Okay.
That'd be easy to.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great.
Um, the last item that was changed, um, had to do with parking. Had to do with kind of being more specific about, um, parking and site design. So under site design, um, we, they talked about, um, parking lots behind buildings. Um, and we, what did we do?
I think we wanted to add the parallel parking in.
Yeah, so we wanted to encourage parallel parking. Wait, Kayla, I printed this out. Where did it?
You have, you wrote in here, off, for eight-five-four-two-seven-eight-C, you wrote off-street. You added off-street parking should not face commercial streets.
Yep.
Right, and what we want to do to fix.
And then you added F. You're adding F. On-street parallel parking is encouraged.
Yep.
Okay, F's not on here.
Right, because it's, it's in the notes that she wants to add it.
Yeah, we're gonna add an F. Yep.
Yeah.
On-street parallel parking is encouraged. Okay.
Yep. And then, uh, what was it? Parking should be.
And we also talked about that, and I, I think the parking garages are for residential use in this area. Isn't that what we talked about?
We did talk about it. I don't know if we came up, if we, if we kind of decided to mandate it, um, or put it in here as a requirement.
Maybe we should discuss that. I had suggested that because I was thinking within this, in these areas, it makes sense for people to have garages for their residential vehicles. But I wasn't sure that it would make sense to have parking garages for the businesses. What, let's discuss. What does everyone think of that?
Is that something that we can be decided upon when someone comes before us?
So one of the, so one of the things that I wanna talk about, so we are allowing structured parking in this district. I think the fear is when people hear in town hear structured parking, they think giant parking garages. But I don't believe the economics of this district do not support a developer coming in and putting in a multi-story parking garage. Because currently, if you were to build a parking garage, it's thirty thousand dollars per space. So what you will likely see is potentially podium-style buildings. So if you look at the bottom-left, um, kind of, um, building, you'll see that.
Yes.
You know, they utilize some, you know, podium style to meet the parking demand.
Then why do we say that? That we allow podium-style parking and we allow parking garages for residential use, but we don't allow large-scale parking garages?
Hate leaving anything to economics, because economics can change from day to day, so, you know, we don't know.
Yep.
Do we allow podium parking? Maybe we even allow, what do they call it when it's just one deck?
Deck, yes, like parking deck.
Parking deck or podium parking and residential garages.
Would you allow commercial users on the, on the parking deck or that's just residents?
I don't know.
Well, can you, can we have, you know, let's say on a special permit basis, we could identify spots for residents, depending on how many you had and how many, uh, uh, you know, apartments or condos. And then you'd have the rest of them as general parking. Yeah, I've seen that before in many places.
Yeah.
We could say park, so, so residential garages allowed.
Yep.
Parking decks on a, on a special park basis. Does that make sense?
Do we want to address underground parking? Because that's, that's really, would be the preference of all of it, right? To go in the back and then enter underground and.
Yeah, if the topography.
And then you don't see any cars in there, right?
Picturing for the residential garages that they go around back and park.
Well, I'm saying even underground. You could go underground with the parking and then everything is, you know, storefronts and everything are on the, you know, on the, on the ground level, and then the residential above that. I mean, that works out well. I think they even have it in Lexington Center that way.
They do. They also have it in, and if you go to downtown Amherst, which is what this whole bylaw is based on, they have their own.
So we could certainly encourage that.
Is that something that you guys are amenable to?
Yeah.
Underground parking, is that okay?
Yeah.
For residential use.
Uh.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what you meant.
Yeah.
Yeah, residential, if it's, yeah, because it, yeah.
Do we, do, do we care if it's underground as commercial?
Yeah, that, well.
Because the whole thing is we don't want big structures, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if it, if there's gonna be a mixed use and you're gonna have residential and commercial, I think it would make more sense to have the residential component be under the ground and then, you know, the, the, the business, retail or whatever being.
Decaded or something.
Yeah, because you're not gonna put it all underground. It's not gonna fit all underground, so I would rather see.
I don't have a problem with it being for both. I mean, if there was residential and non-residential in the same parking garage, they're gonna be marked spaces then, because otherwise the residents aren't gonna.
Correct.
Like that. So I don't have a problem with there being some spaces underground for the business clients.
Right, but if it's mixed use, then is there a way to put the preference? Because I think the preference would be for residents.
Residents, yeah. But maybe that's we.
I think we can put that, I mean, I don't see why we couldn't put that in the bylaw, that, that, that underground.
That guides the next planning board group to say the preference is there for residents and you can always identify.
Yeah.
So if you're gonna have talking for residential and commercial, and you're gonna have one of them being underground, the preference would be for residential being underground.
Okay.
Makes sense. Um, so, can we also just quickly?
Yes.
Eight-point-five-point-four-point-two-point-seven-point-seven materials.
Oh, yes. Still don't like that. I'm gonna get rid of said they were called.
We said we were gonna.
Cementitious panels.
Yeah.
Right, but we said we were gonna only allow them if they were like wood.
Wood appearing.
Wood appearing, because I don't like the way they are.
Cementitious, yes.
Mm-hmm.
There.
Wood appearing.
Sorry, Barbara.
That's okay.
Good catch.
Other thing I had requested was some sort of community benefit.
Yes.
As a part of this. Would that get written into here?
Um, yes, it could. Yep. Um, do you guys, is there something that you guys think I should look into? Is there something specific for town center that, you know, when town center was first brought up and first came to be, that, that, you know, was there any talk about that at the beginning of, um, when it was first brought into fruition? I don't, I don't.
Talk about.
Like pocket parts or.
Yeah, like, when, when.
We really haven't talked about.
Or murals or. Well, I mean, I guess my point is, so were there any public benefit requirements that were discussed when town center was first? Okay.
No.
I'd like to see it be a part of, um, parks and/or art.
Or contributions.
Yeah, or contributions if they can't fit it in.
Well, that's what I need. I mean, I'm perfectly fine with contributions, but something to make sure that.
Yeah.
Public benefit.
And also, is it, you know, I would also.
What was actually the other thing we discussed last time as a part of the benefit? It was something about, um, shoot. Sorry, I'll think about it. There was an idea that we thought of as a public.
Um, I would, I probably also solicit ideas from Melissa Tantaklis, because.
Yep, okay.
It was like a public parking lot or something.
Okay.
Throw money towards municipal, towards, you know, building municipal lot if we wanted to.
Yeah.
The other thing is, um, you know, place-making and event planning and, you know, economic development, um, of this area. And so I, um, I think Melissa, Melissa will probably have.
That'd be great.
But we can probably put some language in there about public benefit that is then, you know, because it's gonna change for each applicant, because for us and we can.
Yeah, for example, and women's got the brickyard and they've got the little waterfall there and the band plays right in front of it, you know, something like that. And it doesn't need to be that big, right?
Right.
So.
I mean, now, when you just need a waterfall.
The center of women.
When they dig the underground, they can just dig a waterfall.
You're right, right. They might be getting the water from Hong Kong. All right, so let's, let's formally, thank you, Liz. Uh, formally, let's start with Bob first, because this is near dear to your heart. Barbara, any other comments?
Um, I think I've, I've said what I need to say. I'm, I'm really excited about this, and I think it's something that the town really needs. I'm deeply concerned about where it will fall in the warrant. I think that if it falls later in the warrant, after the Mall Road Initiative, and the Mall Road Initiative passes, this is dead in the water.
Okay.
So I don't know what we can do about that. If we can talk to plant, the select board and ask them about the order. Because I think it's very clear that this is not going to have an impact on the Mall Road Initiative. But the Mall Road Initiative could kill this.
So the, my, my thought on that is, is that this is a, a follow-on from Town Meeting in September, right? There was an N B A communities that was dictated by the state, right? And we, we covered it, all right? And we didn't do too much else, and there was a lot of feedback from the Town Meeting members at that meeting.
Right.
Sherry, that they said this, we're not doing enough.
Right.
Right? We're not doing enough to, for additional housing. And I think we had somebody come before us a couple of weeks ago to say, you know, what are we doing for McMansions, for, you know, folks that are young families or seniors that want to downsize? And this is what we're doing. So this is what we promised as far as, uh, Town Meeting as a result of approving the N B T A community. So the, the, the activity that Melissa's doing is great. It's kind of long-term. It's kind of strategic with this is the kind of.
Shorter term.
The short-term, how do we get younger families and the seniors to downsize for the folks of Burlington in the town center?
Yes.
So I agree a hundred percent on that. So maybe that type of approach to the, the select was saying, this is the, you know, a campaign promise or something like that. This is the, this is a promise we made and now we're delivering. Okay?
So I'm, I'm going to be presumptuous and ask that if you, as chair, could approach the chair of the select board and make that.
Absolutely, a hundred percent. Okay, perfect.
And I have nothing else to add, but I would love to hear from the audience members and.
Well, let's go around the horn back over to Ernie, and we'll come back this way.
Uh, no, the only, the only thing I was thinking as you were discussing, now, why would, why would we want to, uh, if we allow parking structures for these, why would we want to limit it just for residential? I, I didn't follow that line of reasoning.
I think we sort of talked through that and decided that, no, we shouldn't do that.
So we.
Oh, okay, okay. I missed that one.
We said parking garages would be on a special permit, would be a special permit, right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Fine, fine, fine. Thank you. I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
We encourage. We encourage it to be for residents, yes.
But not requiring.
Yeah.
Okay, all set. Thank you.
Okay, that's it, Ernie? Okay, we'll go over to Joe.
That's it?
Yep. Mr. Impampa, any additional thoughts?
No.
Okay. Ms. Sutherland?
Oh, just one, just one, but.
Yeah, sure.
More to what Bob said with the panels, but I guess we gotta be careful about how we talk about the panels, right? That they, we don't wanna just say it needs to look like wood, right? Because you have some of these.
They're cementitious.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, cementitious panels, right?
Brickstone, cast stone or other finished masonry, and then it mentions cementitious panels, glass, metal, wood, and painted PVC trim. It's only the cementitious panels that I'm uncomfortable with.
Right.
Because they can look.
So is that, is that a cementitious panel going across? In other words.
Are you reading the lower left?
We have, we have, we have them at, um, at the, at the, uh, library. Like, we have some in, in Bob Murray's buildings over there.
Yeah.
Some of those don't look bad. It depends on how they're incorporated, right?
So would that be covered under, uh, a, a Town Center Design Review then, Joe?
But I, I think the idea for this, though, is that we don't have a Town Center Group or Committee that reviews these things anymore. We wanna make it clear enough that.
It's easy.
It's easy for them to do what they're supposed to do. So if this isn't phrased correctly, let's fix it, so they know what it is we're looking for.
So my, um, my, um, thought process in doing this is that, um, this is a lot more prescriptive in this district than the Town Center Design Rules and regs are, um, with the idea being that most of the buildings that are currently on these parcels could not be retrofit to, to, to do this, because, um, you know, it just, it just wouldn't support that type of retrofit. So it allows us to be more prescriptive, um, because, you know, you're essentially, if you're gonna choose this, this overlay option, you're gonna start from scratch.
Right.
However, I, the intent is not to, um, remove this section from the design review of the Town Center that this board has. So this, if some, if a, if a property owner were to come with a, a design, um, for a development in this parcel, in this parcel, in this district, it would still come to the board for design.
And we would still have design review. But hopefully, it's so clear that they would come to us with something that.
It's pretty, it's.
Meets the, meets the criteria. So I still don't know what to do about cementitious panels, because when I look them up, some of them look good and some of them look terrible.
Well, right. But I think, don't they even have them in the, uh, building nineteen site? I think.
Um, I, I.
Certain pieces, bits and pieces in there as well.
I don't know. I don't know. I feel like a lot of cementitious panels, um, are kind of on more modern buildings, but they can be, um, kind of, have a wood grain effect to them. I think that.
Well, I mean, look at the, look at the, look at the, um, library. The library is a, a great mix of cementitious panels and, and, and brick. So I don't, I, I wouldn't say, you know, not that that would be my preference, I'm just saying, it doesn't, it doesn't look bad. But if there, there are some that don't.
The whole thing was.
Ephesus is a problem. We, we didn't like, we didn't like Ephesus. That was one of the things we really wanted to get away from, because it breaks it. It, it, it damages, it, it looks bad all the time, but I guess we gotta maybe do a little bit of more research on that cementitious panel piece.
Thinking about it, when you describe it, I think what I was objecting to is when it was just all cement panels.
Right.
With nothing breaking it up, no brick breaking it up. Then it looks extremely stark and modern.
Right. I mean, the condos that Murray built across from, you know, on the.
Across from the C V S.
I'm saying, so that's north. So that would be, okay, north, that would be the west side of three A.
Yes.
It, I mean, that has a mix of brick and cementitious panels, and I don't.
That's nice.
It's nice. So I think we need, just need to be a little more ca, maybe careful in how we word that.
Yeah, and I, I do, Barbara, I do think that it will be covered as part of the design review.
Maybe we can just play around with that wording between.
I, the, the word is, it's, it's a, yeah, it's a jargony word. I, I, I know exactly what you're, what you're talking about, Barbara. I do believe that it would be.
But if the whole facade is that, it looks bad.
If the whole facade is that and they apply, I'm going to tell any applicant, hey.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Sutherland, sorry.
I'm good.
Okay. I'm, I'm good as well. Um, so this is a public hearing. Anyone out here that wants to talk, uh, opposed in favor of this one? Yes, please. Ms., uh, Ellis.
Yeah, you.
Chair, we do, you have two members online, let's.
We do have.
We have a couple of hands raised online.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Chair, um, Sherry, Ellis, zoning bylaw review committee, Town Meeting member. Thank you. Um, Mr. Chair, um, Sherry Ellis, zoning by law review committee, town meeting member and person who reads all the, all the words. So, um, I have lots of minor questions, but I have more concerns about the, the context of the whole thing that. I'm not sure, and I don't know how to say this, but a lot of this, the design standards, are they bylaws? Or should they be in rules and regulations? There seems to be a lot of things in here that are talking about the design and the panels and things like that, that doesn't necessarily to me seem like it should be zoning. And the things that should be zoning, the dimensional requirements, I don't see any. There's a section for dimensional requirements, eight, it says it's referenced 8.5.5, but I don't see an 8.5.5. So I'm missing any dimensional requirements unless I don't have the most up to date.
The dimensional requirements of section 8.5.5, that is in the, that refers to the town center overlay.
So, so it goes back to that?
Yes, because this is a section within that.
Okay, all right. So then that, that clears up that issue. Because I'm like, I don't see any of that in here. Um, so there's more to this whole section then? There's, is there more than the 8.5.5 as well that this is all part of? To me, it's a whole thing that I'm confused about where this all really fits in, um, to that. That's, I guess my point.
Right into the town overlay bylaw?
Mm-hmm. It fits, it's, it is its own section in the town center bylaw.
Okay. I guess I have to go back and review that.
It's own ge, well, is it the geographic areas as well, right?
Yes.
It's a section within the bylaw.
It's a section within the bylaw.
Geographic areas.
And then you were just talking about how this, if, um, a proposal came before you, it would also be regulated or with the guidelines of the town center rules and regulations. I don't know that that's referenced in here, so maybe again, I missed it. So that you would want to reference.
It's, 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 this is a.
Is it still, it's still, okay, all right. So I guess that's my confusion. This is taken out of context. So again, all right, I'll, I'll have to look at that one.
Sherry, I will, um, I will plug it into the whole thing with it, with that.
Well, that's fine. I mean, I guess that, I didn't realize we were putting in the little section there. So, um, uh, some smaller questions I have, I have. I'll send them to you. And we, we have our ZBRC meeting tomorrow night, so I'm gonna.
Monday night.
Gather them all. Monday night, sorry. Um, days are flying into each other.
I know.
Um, we talked about a 12, um, 12, uh, units per acre.
Yep.
Is that a maximum and minimum? Or do they have to hit 12 exactly?
It's a max.
Okay. So I think you should say that.
Should say max, yeah.
Yeah, we should. Thank you.
And there's another section here that says, any of the following are allowed in the central business district or civic overlay district as found in the sections 4.2, 4.3 and 4.4. So that's the table of what's allowed. So some of the things in there are mobile homes, wholesale trade, hazardous waste storage. Are those the kinds of things that you want in here?
No, but are those, those are also allowed in the CBD and CC overlay districts, correct?
I think so. And so that's what I'm saying. It says any of those are allowed. So I don't know. That's just something that.
Yep.
It's a question. Um, and in the administration enforcement and appeals section, 8.5.4.2.4, it doesn't say anything about the appeals. It just says, actually, it only says a statement about the administration of it. It doesn't say anything about the enforcement of it, or how do you appeal it?
Appeal.
Again, I'll, I'll, it was more of my confusion about how this all fit in to.
Yeah.
So I'll go back and look at that, how it all fits in there. And then after we have our CBRC meeting, all the comments that I get, I will forward over. But I had a few others, but they're minor things, so.
Perfect.
I don't have to write my name.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here on site?
Liz, page three is the appeals.
Thank you.
Online.
Okay, let's go online.
Uh, we have Jack Kelly and, and Michael Murray and Sunil just raised his hand as well. Jack, Jack has had his hand raised the longest.
We'll go with Jack. Mr. Kelly, please.
All right, Jack, request.
Three minutes.
Again, just sent to you.
Sherry just, uh, Jack Kelly, town meeting member precinct seven.
Thank you.
Sherry just touched upon some of what my concern was. There's a lot of dimensional stuff there. The no more than 50% commercial, the percentage of glass, anything that's dimensional, it's not a use, is something that can go to the Board of Appeals for a variance. So i- if you're going to a lot of care to come up with certain numbers, I don't think there's any way you can totally enforce the numbers if the proponent wants to go for a variance. Or am I misunderstanding that? Is there something different in this project or these type of projects that prevent the variance?
I think anything dimensional can go to Board of Appeals.
I mean, there's no way for us to.
Prohibit it.
Prohibit that. And, but I mean, what's the alternative? Don't put, don't put them in.
You can, you can probably override that with design regulations since the board has design review.
Okay.
So I, I think you could, you could probably, we'll get away around that, Bill.
It is a pitfall that we have to be aware of.
Yeah, but don't we do good into a lot of chicken and the egg if we already do it, then it goes to Board of Appeals afterwards?
Yeah.
So.
Right.
Okay, that, that was my concern. You would.
Okay.
You, you're working hard to get certain, you know, design and dimensions of things and it can be subverted.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Kelly. And next up is.
Next up was, uh, Mike Murray Jr. There we go.
Mr. Murray, you're being unmuted.
Hi, uh, Michael Murray with Murray Hills again. Um, I guess I just want to start off by thanking, uh, Liz and Barbara and Ernie for inviting me in to discuss this and listening to my comments. Uh, they already mentioned a lot of the detail stuff that I went over. Um, there was one thing based on your conversation about the parking garages.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to point out, I know it went kind of round and round. But in the town center, parking structures are allowed by special permit already.
That's what I thought.
I just would want to make sure that, I would think that we would, that this would just stay in line with that. So.
Okay.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, um, the only other comment I have on this, I'm in favor of this, uh, is that I, I, I think ideally, I think it would be better and more beneficial if it was more area included in it, the entire town center or maybe the entire CBD. But I understand that sometimes you gotta start with baby steps.
We're gonna nibble on it.
But I just wanted to get that out there.
Yep, no, appreciate it. Yep. We're gonna nibble at it and, and see how town meeting does with it and then, you know, look at other areas. We agree. Yep.
Those all ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
And now, uh, Sunil has his hand raised. Sunil, there's a request on mute.
Sunil?
Yeah, hi. Uh, my name is Sunil, uh, town resident for Cardius. Uh, I live in the, in the CBD and, uh, really happy to see that, uh, we are doing something about it. Uh, I have one question about the, the map that you shared earlier. If you can scroll to that page, please.
Okay.
The, the, the central CBD map that you had very first, yeah?
See, you, you.
He's talking about the map. Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, this one, right? So, so the question I have is like, you know, why, why only the, only, only some of the purple area and not, not like, you know, not expanding more towards like south of the, I mean, sorry, north of the Win Street? You know, the, all that area we have, uh, right next to the Win Street where Shawzees and other shopping, like banks and the things are. Why, why all that area cannot be part of this, uh, proposal?
Yep, we can, we'll let you do that.
This is, this is Barbara. And, and that is something that we discussed. And to be completely frank, we are trying to start off with baby steps. We're trying to present something to town meeting that is really palatable and easy to say yes to. And we were concerned that if we presented something too large, that would be hard to really imagine, that it would be difficult for town meeting to say yes to, especially in light of the fact that they're considering another very large, um, change in the Mall Road Initiative. So we wanted to keep this very simple and, and compact so that then town meeting can see how it develops. And if they like it, then would be more willing to expand in the future. Now, that having been said, once this district is defined and middle housing is defined, any property owner could come forward and request that their property be rezoned for middle housing. And that would be something we would take up at that time. And I would assume they would come with a full proposal. There's nothing preventing that from happening. Um, but we wanted to keep it small and we identified these particular properties because we felt that they provided a nice transition from the businesses to the single-family homes that are behind them. And that was something we were looking for and something that we know.
The residents.
Residents were looking for, that they would be happy to have middle family housing next to them instead of commercial. So that's how we identified these places that we consider the start. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sunil. Uh, anyone else online?
Uh, well, Ernie has his hand raised.
Oh, Ernie. Oh, sorry, Ernie, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, no problem. I just wanted to, uh, point a clarification more than anything else. I just wanted to remind everybody but that the town center committee was advisory to the planning board. So just because it doesn't exist anymore does not mean, we still, the planning board still has design review is what I'm saying.
Yes, that's true.
Yep.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Covino. Okay, any other comments? We good? This is a public hearing. Again, this will be, we'll talk about this on December 5th and continuing it.
Yep, no more hands up online, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this public hearing to the planning board meeting of December 5th, 2024.
Second.
Go call.
Um, Gafney.
Yes.
Larue.
Yes.
And, um, Empemba.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Covino.
Okay, five.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item F.
Like, where am I? I don't know. Um, next we are.
Oh, 88. So this is item.
E.
E. Get back to E. I'm jumping around here. Item E, public hearing amendment to Article 2, definitions Article 4 and use regulations Article 11. Special residential regulations of the zoning bylaws to bring the zoning bylaws into alignment with the state laws regarding accessory dwelling units. They call those ADUs. That is again submitted by the planning board. Liz?
Sure. So, um, this is, um, this came about, um, in August. Um, the legislature and then the governor subsequently signed, um, a housing bond bill, um, that, um, essentially, um, changed, um, every single family's zoned property in the state, um, must now allow for an accessory dwelling unit by right. Um, and so this is, um, our attempt at not only getting into compliance with, with the state, but also incorporating our own, um, restrictions, um, and, um, things that we would like to see as part of that. Um, so let me, so again, um, Mara Healy signed the Affordable Homes Act, not the housing bond bill, sorry, Affordable Homes Act. Section seven and eight of the Affordable Homes Act amends the zoning act and establishes new ADU laws and definitions. There are, the ADU, um, this law makes ADUs a protected use under the Dover Amendment. So it becomes a protected use like, um, nonprofit religious organizations and daycares and schools. This becomes, um, a protected use. Um, so what are, what it actually is an ADU? What is an accessory dwelling unit? The state has, um, the law defines it specifically as what, what, what they're talking about is a housing, a self-contained housing unit inclusive of sleep and cooking and sanitary facilities on the same lot as a principal dwelling unit. So it's always, um, subordinate to the principal dwelling unit. Um, it needs to, um, maintain a separate entrance. Um, it cannot be larger in gross floor area than half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. So if you only have a 1,500 square foot ranch, you cannot, um, put a 900 square foot ADU on your property. Um, and then the third part of that is, is that is subject to such additional restrictions as may be imposed by a municipality. And those additional restrictions are what I'm presenting to you today.
Okay.
Um, so kind of just context, why is the state doing this? Um, I'm sure a lot of people kind of, you, you know, you know, the housing situation around here, that housing is hard to come by. Um, and it's the state's way of, um, trying to expand and diversify housing options without requiring, with, without requiring sprawl. Um, and so, um, ADUs can be part of the, um, solution to create enough housing for people at all income levels and all stages of their life. Um, so these are the development standards that I am proposing to bring to town meeting. Only one, um, accessory dwelling unit per lot may be created as of right. So any additional ADUs will require a special permit. And any additional ADUs will need to be, um, deed restricted affordable. So they will need to be part of our affordable housing inventory.
And just so for people, I think we already discussed this, but my understanding is that we are not allowed to say they can only have one, correct?
I believe that is the case.
Okay, so that's why we're doing, I just wanted people to know.
Yes.
Why we have that in there.
Yes. Um, and so, um, so it, you know, to make something deed restricted affordable, it's, it's a high bar, and a special permit to come as a, you know, as a homeowner to come here for a special permit. Also a very high bar. Um, it shall meet all, um, the dimensional requirements in the ROs this district. So currently, um, except that the building height shall be no taller than the principal single-family dwelling or a maximum of 20 feet, whichever is shorter. So if you have, um, you know, a, a ranch house and you put an ADU in the back, you can't have that ADU be, you know, a tower behind your ranch house. So the other, um, the other thing that I've added is that the combined gross floor area of all ADUs on the lot shall not exceed half the gross floor area of the principal one-family dwelling or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. So again, that.
No, go ahead.
That further restricts it. So if you come in for a spec, for a by right ADU and then you come in for a second ADU special permit, um, you have, for a second ADU, the, the size of that, the size of both combined cannot exceed half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling or 900 square feet.
Mr. Empemba.
So it, but it doesn't, it doesn't, um, regulate which unit the owner lives in though, right?
You cannot, the state has said that you cannot dictate, um, that ownership.
Okay.
Live in the either unit.
I guess my question is, if the, you know, the ADU is restricted on, that would be the only one that's restricted on, on affordability, correct?
Yep.
Yeah.
So you deed restrict, so in, in theory, you could deed restrict the EDU, the ADU and then move into that? And then you could sell your other unit out, you could, you could rent your other unit out for as much as you wanted to rent it for?
I, so if it's deed restricted affordable, it has to go through a housing lottery process and you have to meet the income eligibility for it to be affordable. So you couldn't move into it because it would be in violation of the, the, the.
So they can't, so then basically, in essence, they're restricting where you can live. They're not, I thought they didn't restrict which one of the units.
So I, so.
Only the second unit is required to be deed restricted affordable. If you have just one ADU.
You can move into a smaller one.
You couldn't move into it.
Right, so if you built the smaller one.
Right.
Yeah.
And restricted that.
Uh, you wouldn't have to restrict it.
Yeah.
Because you only had, that's only one. Why don't you go for your second ADU? That's.
So the second, so the second one would be mandatorily restricted.
That's correct.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Yep, that's correct.
Got it. So there's no restriction, so they're not really creating affordable housing.
No.
They're only creating affordable housing if we give them a second unit on, or, you know, they're given a second unit.
They're increasing housing.
They're increasing housing.
Increasing housing, but.
Which they say, if you do that, if you do that and they say, then you're talking about, well, the price will go down because you have more of a, of a housing stock.
Supply and demand.
Which in Burlington, yeah.
Right.
They're also only 900 square feet, so that's gonna.
Yeah.
That's gonna dictate how much you can charge as well.
Well, not if you move into that.
Right. Let's be a Joe. We're gonna be roomies.
So we have additional development standards. Um, an ADU, um, can't have more than two bedrooms. Um, uh, we currently don't allow, nor will we allow, um, short-term rentals on any of these units. We don't allow short-term rentals anywhere in town. Um, that's Airbnb. The ADU and the principal dwelling unit shall not be divided into two separate lots. and the, no ADU may be separately sold as a condominium or otherwise. It all, an ADU by definition needs to be subordinate to a principal dwelling unit. If it no longer is subordinate to a principal dwelling unit, it is no longer an ADU. And then it is no longer a byright use.
Okay.
Right? Additionally, so, there are additional design standards. So, you know, we say, you know, the appearance of the, of the ADU shall kind of meet the same appearance as a single-family dwelling. Any entry to the ADU shall be located on, located on the side or the rear of the principal dwelling. So, you know, I've heard a lot of people worried about maintaining the character of our single-family neighborhoods. And so, you know, this is our attempt to say, okay, you know, we're gonna make sure that this, again, it's, it's a subordinate use. All stairways to the primary entrance to an ADU shall be enclosed with an exterior wall. So if you're on a second or third floor, you can't just have a deck going up the side of your garage to the ADU above your garage. It needs to be fully enclosed. Where there are two or more entrances already on the front facade of a principal dwelling unit, the accessory unit entrance shall, shall, again, look subordinate to that. ADU shall have at least one off-street parking space, but we are not, um, saying that only one access driveway shall be permitted on a lot containing an accessory unit, so not increasing the number of curb cuts either. So you, you know, you have to either expand your existing driveway or make sure that you can prove that there's a designated spot for that ADU. Then we have siting standards. So, in the bylaw, so, um, you know, you cannot place your principal dwelling unit in the no-build area, so you can't
Right zone.
Yep, the no-zone. You can't build your ADU in front of, anywhere in front of the existing wall, front wall of the, um, of the principal dwelling. And that is the same for corner lots. And so, you know, it always has to be, you know, a subordinate appearance to the principal dwelling. And then, questions, comments? Again, similar to our last discussion, I kind of went over this because this is the first public hearing, similar to what we talked about last time. But then, I did wanna go over some updates that I made based upon our discussion at the last meeting. So, let's see. We had discussed, um, at stating that three or more ADUs on a single lot are prohibited, so I added that language. I added language stating that the interior square footage of each ADU shall be no less than 300 square feet. So, um, because I think people were worried about micro-units coming in to, to, to do that. And then there was
So from a micro-unit standpoint, what's the typical micro-unit square footage?
I think it's like, like tiny house, like 250.
250?
Or less.
Close to 300.
Yeah.
You wanna increase that a little bit, or?
So, do we wanna increase the
The 300?
Um, I mean, a micro-unit is 250 and less.
Okay.
What is the problem with a micro-unit?
Well, you, you pop on a couple of them, so you don't want
Well, no, but you, we can restrict anything more than
Three.
Yeah, we can restrict any more than two.
Can't only have two, max.
Right, you can only have
Well, this one says prohibit, okay, prohibit three or more. You should say prohibit two or more.
Oh, sorry.
Right.
No, I
Right, you wanna change that?
That's
You can't prohibit two ADUs.
That's right.
Yes.
No more than, no more than two, Liz.
So then you go 300, 300, 300, is that what you're saying?
Two.
You can't have three.
You can't have three. So you can, you're restricted to two.
Do 300 and 600, but you can't do
So wait, in other words
So then you would go, you move the one up to 400, you move that up to 450.
Yeah. But doesn't that eliminate the prob, the whole problem of micro-units? Why would you care if it's a small unit?
A gold doghouse or something.
Well, they also have to have a, um, special permit for the second unit at all.
Yes, and every single unit needs to be connected to
Kitchen.
Sewer, sanitary sewer and water. So if you were to bring in a tiny home, you would have to connect it to the sanit, you have to connect it to the
Let me ask you this. From, from that standpoint, what if it had a self-contained, you know, kind of, unit that recycled, you know, did its own thing?
Like its own.
That would be a question for the Board of Health and the Building Inspector, but my understanding, and I think in this language, we are requiring that it be connected to
Okay.
We don't, we don't allow, Burlington doesn't.
Yeah, we don't allow it, like, yeah, we can, we don't do septic tanks anymore.
New dwelling, it's gotta be hooked into sewer, so.
Or, yeah, you know.
Thank you.
But again, I'm just, not to belabor this, but what's, what, what is the problem with a micro?
So I
Limiting the amount, and
I, um
At a visual standpoint, you, you know, you know, a little tiny little thing, you want something to look subordinate to the neighborhood, I would
Well, I mean, I would, I mean, be honest with you, wouldn't you rather have a smaller building on, as a second building, rather than a big unit?
So you get a little doghouse and just, make it look like a dog, yeah, little playhouse or like a little tiny house.
Right, I mean, there's nothing wrong with that.
Painted.
So that came about, there was discussion at the, I can't remember if it was Land Use Committee or CBRC, I apologize, where one of the members mentioned that he was uncomfortable with micro-units. I think he's thinking about places like Hong Kong, where it's like, you literally have like a, you know, a pod that you live in, but I don't, I mean, that's where that came from. It can be removed, I, I take your point, Joe, like, I don't, I, I mean, I am open to changing it, I'm not
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a risk if you, if, if you could say, look, we'll have three, you know, can't be more than 900, so we're gonna have three micro-units, but you can prevent them from having three micro-units.
You can't have three.
That's what I'm saying, you can prevent them from, from having three.
Yeah.
So, it's really only one or two, so it's, and the second one is by special permit, so, I, the micro piece of it, I don't really see that as an issue, right?
I'm fine with
Good, I'm not on it.
That doesn't look like a shed in another house, huh?
Ernie?
That was, that was, Liz, that discussion took place at CBRC meeting, I'm pretty sure, and that was when there was no limit on the number of units.
Gotcha.
Ah.
Number of additional ADU units, and people were thinking coffin-type units such as China has, Hong Kong has, uh, you know, uh, the old, uh, what am I thinking, uh, the old, they call coffin-type units, they're very, very tiny.
Yeah.
And they're basically just a bedroom.
Okay.
And, and this case, it, that wouldn't work anyways. But while I'm at it, can I ask Liz a question too, Bill? I have the, Liz, uh, the stairway to the second floor on the ADU, it says must be in an exterior wall. So we, uh, eliminate some ambiguity.
Ah, I see.
So we don't, not into, too ambiguous, can we say must be within an exterior wall of the dwelling? Otherwise, you could put an exterior wall on an exterior
Yeah.
staircase
Yeah.
And call it, you know what I mean?
Well, yeah, gotcha, good point, Ernie.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Joe, we'll swing it this way, any other comments?
Uh, no.
Great, thank you. Ms. Sutherland? Barbara?
No, great job, great job, Liz.
Yep, no, no other comments, I mean, thank you to, to the folks that involved. Go ahead, Joe.
I'm sorry, I, I, so I, it's the question I asked originally.
Yes.
And, and the deed restrictions on the third unit.
The deed restrictions on the second unit.
On the third unit, the third on, on the lot, so the second accessory
Second ADU.
Third unit on the lot.
Yes, correct, yes, 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 thank you, yes.
So I guess, how does that differ from what my question was to begin with? So you restrict that third unit, or, or second ADU, and then you move into that one? Where, where, is it, is that prevented from happening?
Yes. So, it's, because when you deed restrict a property
Yep.
It's the same, it's, it's, it goes through the same as a 40B. So it has to have a, um, a housing lottery.
Okay.
And it has, you have to meet the income restrictions, and you have to prove, you have to register it with this, with E H L C and, and go through a huge process.
You answered it, as long as they have those criteria attached to it, then that's, then that makes sense.
And it's also an asset, too. It's not only income, it's asset, isn't it?
Yes.
Right.
Yes, that was the, the
Yep.
Two houses that you already own, probably
That's an asset, you already held.
You don't need three.
What's that?
You, if you have, if you have the house, it's already, it's your asset, so it's not only income requirement, but it's an asset requirement, so you already, you already blew that because you have a house.
You won't qualify normally.
Right.
Yeah.
Unless you put it in your kids' names.
That ain't happening at the Impemba House, I'll tell you that much.
Wait a minute, I hear a lawyer talking, don't I?
All right, so, I'm all set here as well, and it's a public hearing. Anybody here, do we have anybody that would like to, maybe one person here, thank you.
We have three people with their hands raised online.
Is that right?
Yep.
Excellent.
Cool.
Oh, you want somebody else to go first?
You go first.
Yeah, please, you're right here.
Thank you, Sherri Ellis. CBRC in town meeting. I'll send, again, comments once we get them from CBRC, had a couple. More with regard to restricting things. I think we talked about before that the side yard setback that you had
Yep.
20, you were gonna bring back to the 15.
Bring back the original 15.
Is that still?
That's supposed to be, yes. Are you using the version that's on our website? I know, okay, yes, yes.
Whatever the most, you know, whatever you sent me the last time is what I mark up, and then it changes, and so I have no idea.
Yeah.
So I send them back, the version control is really difficult. So, it also appears that, that these ADUs by right, I believe, can be in the Town Center overlay, right? You can't restrict them as to where they are, is that correct?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Okay, so, then, um, there's a regulation in here that says, and I'm not sure what this is, it's under 11 2.2.1B. The town has established some lingo that I don't know what that is, of the zoning bylaws to govern and reasonably regulate and construction of ADUs within the single-family zoning districts. So, do we need to also say within the Town Center overlay, or is that because it's an overlay, it doesn't matter?
So, um, so, again, this goes back to the, um, to the base zoning, so there are parcels in the overlay, in the Town Center overlay that are, um, that are single-family.
So, okay, so it's the overlay, so it doesn't really
It doesn't really matter.
Got it. So, back to my, the restrictions, if, if the 15 feet is now back to that, then I'm good with that.
Yep, correct.
Where also looks like, again, this is the version I had, that the height of the principal dwelling can be no taller than the principal dwelling or a maximum of 20 feet. So, again, with the
Which is
Limiting of these, whichever's shorter, the small ranches are being, you know, really restricted here. And these are the housing that we're trying to get more of, right? So that, that folks that wanna move out of these older homes can maybe, you know, do something, bring someone in. So we're restricting them, they can only, you know, the original 900 ranches can only build 450 square feet. Now we're gonna restrict them to their height, so we can't put anything on top of their house, um, which you can normally. If I wanna put a second-story addition on to my house, I can do that, go up to 30 feet. I don't know why we're restricting it to 20 feet or the shorter. So, original ranch is less than 20 feet, so, again, they can't bump up and make a nicer space. I, I have a problem with that. And then I also have a problem with limiting the driveways. There are many single-family homes that have two driveways in their front yard. Why are we limiting the ADU to not have a driveway of its own? There, to me, there seems to be, there's been too many restrictions put on this that I, I have concerns over. So those are my, my biggest ones, so.
So the driveway that requires a selectman curb cut, then, right?
I, so for single-family
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't
So you're limiting the curb cuts, or you're limiting the driveway? Are you, are you eliminating the number of curb cuts? Or are you limit, because you can have a driveway off, off
Off that
The single curb cut, you can
My intention is to limit curb cuts. The intention there is to limit the number of curb cuts.
So it looks like it's a single-family
Yeah, so it looks like a single family.
Area, you know.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the
Single-family field.
Right, but if, if someone wants to go to, it's the select board that does that, correct? A curb cut?
Right.
So if a single-family home wants another curb cut for their home, they go to the select board and they'll prove it or not. So why are we restricting this here? When we're not restricting it for a single-family home? Just a question.
Um, I, so
Same thing with the heights.
So I took a very, um, based upon feedback and concerns, I took a very conservative approach to this.
Right.
We, I, you know, I'm open to any changes, um
Yeah, I would, I would think, if we're trying to keep as much of the same character of a single-family
Agreed.
Neighborhood.
I think that ship sailed when we allowed McMansions. And so, the McMansions are gonna benefit from this a lot more than the smaller capes and ranches, right? And the ship has sailed, in my mind, of, you know, when we put on all these different additions, and you've got a clunk here and a clunk there, that doesn't, it's not a single-family
Yeah, I, I would, I would, I'm gonna keep the conversation separate from McMansions, because that's a whole different
It's just additions, so anybody can do any addition to their home
Yeah.
And not be restricted by the height other than the 30 feet, which is for everybody.
Which you can do.
So we're restricting this to 20, I'm not sure why we're restricting it more.
So, in my opinion, we're, we're trying to address the state law, right? So there's all sorts of things that we can do to our own homes today, right? Does that mean we're gonna build a second unit for that? We could, right? And then you just have to do an in-law, or a, or an accessory unit and follow those deals. So now this is kind of following the state law, we're trying to, I think, trying to put it in such a way we don't flip the entire character of the town at the single-family neighborhood. So that's why I say, you keep that single curb cut versus now everybody that's gonna do this is gonna have two curb cuts, and now you're kind of changing us from a single-family to maybe ones that have, um, other towns that may not be seen as attractive because they all have the dual driveways for one and the other on a two-family or three-family.
And can you do a second curb cut by special permit? And then, obviously, they'd need a
No, we don't have control over curb cuts.
No, they would need a control, they would need
You'd need
Okay from them.
Yeah.
And then they would need a special permit from us.
Right. Yeah.
Well, I mean, you know, in certain, certain circumstances, if they could prove that it's necessary.
Yeah.
Thinking of like a corner lot, right?
Yeah.
So if you're putting a smaller unit around the corner, and so now your driveway's over here, but your home is over here, I mean, that may be a cause, not that everybody should do it, but it just seems like it's another restriction.
Well, maybe that's what we address on this, a special permit, like I said, Joe, you know? I had Ms. Sutherland.
And I have a question, because under the, what is an ADU? Two of the visuals are above garage or interior upper level. So how does that work with this? If it's attached.
So, so you are correct, and there were addition, I could've added more visuals. The point of those visuals was not to show where the ADU could be, it was just to really show the no-build zone.
Where it could not be.
Where you could, a no-build zone. So, so to speak to your point, Sherri, about the ranches and, you know, the smaller ranches that are getting torn down, there's nothing in this bylaw that would prevent an owner of a ranch to put on an AD, an attached ADU that extended onto their house.
Correct, but it couldn't be larger, it couldn't be taller than their fifteen or sixteen.
Because that's a dimension.
Yeah.
Okay.
All good.
Okay. Point.
What if they added the ADU to the second floor?
Above the second floor? You could.
And, and then it makes it taller than twenty feet, can they do that?
Nope.
Nope.
They could not.
Okay. But you could, but you can build a, you can build a single-family house on a residential lot now that can, can be thirty feet tall.
That's correct.
So you can't, you can't add an ADU to an existing ranch over the garage that makes it twenty-five feet?
Taller than the existing one.
You can with, with a variance on the Board of Appeals.
With a variance, my.
Yeah, you'd have to, right, yeah.
So the, yeah, the, my thought process behind doing that is I was, was concerned that residents would not wanna see, you know, a neighborhood that was built in the sixties, it's all ranches and you have ADUs, but somebody in their backyard puts a thirty-foot ADU behind.
A twenty-foot.
A twenty-foot ranch house, and it looks just like a weird tower. So that was, that was the thought process. I know what you're saying, Sherri. I totally know what you're saying. That was the thought process. I, I.
That's a, that's a standalone though, Liz. How about an addition to, to a ranch on top of a garage or something?
Well, they would just build it as an addition, and then therefore you wouldn't have this height restriction.
No, you, you still would if it's an ADU.
So then, does it need to be?
You would not qualify it as an ADU.
No, I think what.
No, would, why, why would they?
You'd have to live in the addition and with the, you would have to be separate on the lower half.
So then, I have a proposed change, I think might bridge this.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so the building height shall be no taller than the principal single dwelling unit, single-family dwelling or a maximum height of twenty feet, whichever is shorter, for detached ADUs.
Can we do that?
Sure can.
Yeah, we're not.
Can, yep. Why not?
Does that, does that?
So, so that means you couldn't have a detached garage and put an ADU above that?
If you have a ranch, could not.
That's correct.
That's right.
If you had a ranch, if you had a.
Listen, at that, at the point of concern, it's an addition to your single-family home because if, for it to be an ADU, you'd have a separate entrance.
Right. But there are people right now, actually, that own, they have a single-family ranch, and there's a detached garage in the back. They could take that detached garage and maybe wanna put an ADU over it. Why would we object to that?
Yeah, they couldn't, right.
They couldn't.
I mean, that's what my concern would.
So do we, or do we feel comfortable getting rid of that height restriction? Again, these are things that.
And leaving it at thirty, if the height restriction is for everything else.
There is thirty.
I went, I, I went all the way, I'm happy.
I mean, you may be able, maybe do it as a garage, if it's a garage. I mean, if it's a detached garage, then you can put the unit above, it could go higher than the other unit, but.
So take a, take a look.
You can't just build a, an ADU that's high.
Take a look over at Sherri's house, there's already one there, right? So take a look, so if everybody could take a ride down on Hemlock. Hemlock Lane, do me a favor, before the next meeting, Hemlock Lane, right on the corner of Sandy Brook, right, take a look, you see it.
Is that an ADU? It's a, I don't know if it's an ADU, I don't, it's just a garage. I don't know what's in it.
It could be an ADU.
There's many that can be ADUs that probably are. I mean, there's also on Brown Avenue, there's a huge garage there that has something of.
So take a look, so take a look, and that neighborhood, maybe there's some other neighborhoods, but that's what you'll see, you'll see a ranch type up or a split, and then you see something in the back that's thirty feet.
And another, another good spot is actually near me on Stony Brook. There's a house that they built.
Oh my goodness, don't even ask me how that got built.
They built a pool house in the back.
Yep.
But it has a chimney and everything. It's a, it's a full-blown second house. Behind the main house. And it's on a hill, so it's also, that's the other thing, is like if you're building on a hill, and then you're gonna do thirty feet.
Yeah, yeah, well, you gotta go to the elevation, so. So let's do that before the next meeting.
Thank you.
Take a look and see what we're up to.
Yeah, think about it, ruminate about it, you can.
And take a road trip and.
Take a road trip.
Sherri, there's, so there's three, three people with hands raised on WebEx. I believe WebEx has it by time they've been raised, I think Jack Kelly is first.
Mr. Kelly's quick to the, to the draw, Mr. Kelly, please.
Boy, this is a fun conversation.
Go ahead.
The first question I had is, what's the difference between an ADU and an in-law apartment that's built attached?
Steph?
I can answer that. So an in-law unit is part of the building code, and an in-law unit is an area of your principal dwelling unit that does not have separate cooking facilities or sanit, you know, that is not, does not have a separate entrance. There can be no doorway separating the in-law unit from the main living area of the principal dwelling.
It can be a doorway, it just can't be closed doorway.
It can't be a closed doorway, yep.
Okay. All right, so if you add an ADU and it's attached, do you have to build a firewall? I, I thought they had, okay. So if you have an ADU that's a separate building, is there a minimum distance between the two buildings?
Whatever the building code says is required. I can double-check with Mark.
Well, it's, that's, it's, the setbacks from the sideline back and what have you, I'm talking between the two buildings.
Between houses, good question, good question.
Good question, I can ask Mark Dupell that.
Yep.
I am wondering if there is a building code requirement for five.
I know in some cases you need ten feet for fire purposes.
Yes.
Firefighting purposes.
Okay, good question, Jack.
So, thank you.
Okay.
So if you have a circular drive, you've already got two curb cuts.
Right, yep.
Or you can petition a circular drive, and now you can just extend one of those to the ADU.
Yep.
Or if you, a reason may be, in order to just use one curb cut, you're creating a lot more pavement to get to this ADU. And it may be better to give them a, a second curb cut for a small driveway because you'd have less pavement.
That's a good idea.
Right, but that's, I think, why Joe suggested the second driveway would be by special permit.
By special, so we're case by case.
Steph, doing that, just do a, do a circular.
But if you already have a circular drive, you've already got the second cut, you don't need to go to the select.
True.
Okay.
And now you were talking about, if you've seen my garage, it's got a second floor, it's taller than my house.
Yep.
Now, it, it can't be converted to something to live in because it was not built meeting any type of fire code for habitation, but it already is taller than my house. So if I wanna build an ADU in my backyard, is the height restriction my house? So my garage, which is already taller than my house.
Well, is your garage separate, Jack?
It's the primary residence.
Yes.
It's the primary residence.
It's a completely separate building.
Yep, okay.
Then it's your house.
Yeah.
Your house, yep.
Yeah, so the, the house is a split, you know, so it's a little taller, well, you know, it's no taller than some of the ranches.
Yep, anything else, Jack?
Yes.
One more.
I received an email yesterday from an Avi Kaufman. Did anyone else get that?
Yes.
No.
What the heck is that? You know, I went and plugged in my address, but that's as far as I went because I then had to give him permission to access to a lot of information that I'm not willing to give out. Who is he, what's he doing?
Yes, so yesterday, I believe it only went out to town meeting members. I was not involved, a town meeting member emailed it to me. It is a, an online piece of, it's an online software that was created by a real estate agent in Newton who basically is building a software program online, where, kinda like Zillow, but where you, it will look into, you know, your zoning codes and tell you as a single-family homeowner what you could build for an ADU. One of the, right, one of the features that was sent, I believe, to town meeting members just showed all of the parcels that an ADU could be built on in Burlington. However, the assumptions were not, did not, were not correct. Like they didn't take in, they didn't, they didn't have our setbacks, they didn't have, they, so it was kind of a very broad stroke.
So if we don't pass anything at town meeting, then whatever they put on this database is good, is game for an ADU?
I don't, I, I wouldn't equate, I, I mean, I wouldn't equate that with the database. So if we did not pass anything at town meeting in, at the beginning of February, a homeowner could come in to the building department, and the, and the building department would have to issue a building permit for an ADU just based on.
Current setbacks.
Just based on the, this, the state requirement and setbacks.
Right.
And setbacks, okay, thank you.
Yeah, the setbacks that were on Mr. Kaufman's site were incorrect.
Okay, and no, no surprises.
I, I got that far.
Yep, okay, anything else, Jack?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly, next up?
Next we have someone named Paula, you're being sent a request on mute.
Okay, Paula.
Sunil, we see you, you'll be up next.
Paula, please provide your full name and address, please.
Oh, there should be.
Oh, there we go, hi, everybody.
There you go.
I'm Paula, I currently live on Dunlap.
Yep, your last name, Paula, please.
Bernard, B-E-N-A-R-D.
Thank you.
The property I'm interested in is over on Mallard Way. But can you clarify a couple of things for me? It's probably been a month since I downloaded the, the bylaw part. And at that time, I thought we were, you were excluding detached. Are you, is, is detached an option?
Yes, it is.
It is an option, I confirm that with town council. We cannot restrict it to just, with, to just attached units. We, we have to allow both attached and detached.
Okay. If, if there's a structure on that property that's only about four hundred square feet, can an addition be designed to that? A detached structure and then put a new addition on it?
To be considered an ADU or to have?
Yeah, right.
I believe you could put an ADU on a detached structure, yes, but it would have to meet fire codes and.
Separate entrance.
And separate entrance and all, and sewer, you'd have to bring in sewer and water and all that.
Right, I've been trying to, I, I, nothing against you guys because I know it's, it's very vague and nobody knows, but I've, I've gone to town hall twice and asked some of these questions, and I don't really get answers.
Yeah.
We don't either, the state hasn't really given us rules and regulations either, so I feel you.
Okay, so my other option, my other option would be, there's a six hundred and seventy-two square foot room above the garage, which is part of the main structure, the main house, right?
Yep.
It currently has a staircase down the back. It has a little deck and a staircase.
Yep.
So am I have to cut the staircase off because it sticks out the back to have an accessory dwelling unit?
How do you, how do you get up to the second floor today, just that staircase?
Um, you mean, you can cut through the rest of the house, but you'd have to go through a bedroom. So as an ADU, you wouldn't be doing that.
So you would have to enclose that within?
The main structure.
The main structure.
So just build walls around it? Or I have to bring it inside?
You would probably have to, it would have to meet building code for an interior staircase.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so then the next part was water and sewer. I, I asked, because of the way the, the lot is and where the current, you know, it's an old septic system house, so the, the pipe came out of the back of the house, and it wraps all the way around the house, and then comes out to the front lawn and connects to the sewer.
Yep.
Where, you know, which is a distance from where the garage is, it's on the other side of the house.
Yep.
So I asked if you could put in a separate sewer connection and a separate water connection, and the building department didn't think so.
Okay.
You know, and they, they touted that, they're trying to make it look like a, like a one-family house, which I completely understand that. And that's probably why the height restriction, they don't want someone with a short ranch having something sticking up that you can see from the road. That would be my guess.
Yeah.
But can you get a separate, a second connection and a water line and pay a separate water and sewer bill?
No. No.
No.
Okay, so I'd have to try and figure out how to route the sewer and hit the line at the right elevation.
This is a specific request, so this should go right to the building inspector, not to be covered here. This is more of a, of a zoning thing.
No, I know, but they couldn't answer any questions.
And what we're doing is we're putting this in place for February, so one sec.
No, I understand we're putting it in place for February, but I wanna be ready in February.
Yeah, we do too, so we're putting it, as this is a draft document. So all the questions, you've got it, great, and we don't have all the answers now because it's a draft document and not till we get this done and voted on for town meeting for February.
Okay.
All righty, great point, anybody else online?
Yes, we have, Sunil has his hand raised, so.
Sunil.
Requesting on mute, like we have.
Thank you, Paula.
And.
Yeah, hello again, so this is also another positive change in my opinion. I have one feedback, on this slide we have that, right? Why are we restricting, restricting grass floor area to like, you know, nine hundred or half of the principal? I, I think that's, that's not really a good idea because it means, you know, if you have a bigger house, you can have a bigger ADU. And if you have a smaller house, like on my street, a lot of people have house with only nine hundred square foot or thousand square foot, so they can't put large enough ADU that they need. I think the, the spirit of this change in the state is to make housing more affordable and, and reduce the urban sprawl. I mean, population is gonna grow, housing demand is gonna grow, and state is finally recognizing this and coming out with this kind of rules and regulation to, to build more houses. And then when we do this kind of, you know, we restrict, you know, we add more restriction on the housing, which may not even probably stand against the state law. So I, I feel that, you know, you know, putting this rule that, you know, the, the size can be only half the size of your house or nine hundred, whichever is smaller, is unfavorable specifically to people who have smaller house and need more space. So that's, that's one feedback I want to give as a town citizen. The other question I have is, can this ADU, can it have a basement that can be an unfinished space? You know, you, you probably want to clarify those point.
Okay, thank you.
On, on ADU, like how close to the actual house it can be? Like at nine hundred square foot, it's like the ranch house that I used to live in, same nine hundred square foot ranch house, so.
Yeah.
People don't clarify if, if it can have a basement or not and so forth.
Yep, thank you, the, the ranch house I used to live in. So we're talking, first of all, the nine hundred square feet, that is the state.
So the, so the, so yeah, Sunil, so the restrictions regarding the nine hundred square feet or half the size of the principal dwelling, that is the definition that the state came out with that we have to adhere to. You're correct that it is, it is unequal. You are, your, your point is well-taken, but that is what the state has, has dictated to be the definition of what an ADU is in this state by right.
From a basement standpoint, they probably, separate entrance, you could go around back, you could probably have kitchen, you could have a.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you can, you can have anything, you can have the ADU be interior to your existing home anywhere, basement, attic, detached, attached, above a garage, above a detached garage, above a, you know, you can have it anywhere as long as it meets the setbacks in the, in the, in the zoning district, the RO zoning district, and.
Separate entrance.
And it meets our design requirement.
And separate facilities.
And has to, has to abide by all fire safety.
Fire safety, so yeah, it is.
Yep, it's all gonna be, yep.
Yep, so it's possible, but there's gonna be some requirements on that.
Yep.
Yep, great, thank you, Sunil.
Yeah, but, but I think, I think my, my question with the ADU is a, is a separate dwelling, right? Can it have a basement?
No, not necessarily, you can have separate, or you can have one in the house, yep.
That, that's correct, so if the ADU is separate, like a detached, right? Can the ADU also have a basement?
Can the ADU have, so, so it's interior, it could, yes.
Could.
It could, Sunil, yes, but it has to meet the, it can't be nine hundred square feet or half the size of the original dwelling unit. So as long, you could build a basement, but is the nine hundred square feet livable space? Like finished space? Yes. So then the basement.
Yeah, yeah, if the basement is not finished, will it become as a?
Finished basement?
No, I'm saying, you could have an unfinished basement.
Oh.
Nine hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Yes, you could.
Building inspector question.
Yeah.
It's not livable, it's not kind of.
So I don't.
Yeah, 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 right, so you, yeah, this building inspector stuff, that would.
Yeah, so they did have to figure that out, right?
Yeah, yeah, if there's a walkout, then you're probably in better shape than if you were if you just had a straight, you know, basement, yeah, yep.
Yeah, there, I mean, I know that there has to be, for fire safety, you have to have an egress and like there has to be a big enough window and all this stuff, so.
And there has to be firewalls in between units.
A hundred percent.
So you need a ceiling to be the firewall in this case, yeah, okay, so this this there'd be requirements that would be pretty tricky, but doesn't sound like it's impossible, but.
Yeah, it's definitely, it's definitely a building inspector question.
Yes, exactly, great, thank you, Sunil, um, so everyone's here is all set.
I see no other hands online, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we're doing, this is going to be again, public hearing continued to December fifth, may have question.
Mister Chair, I would like to make a motion and continue this public hearing to the planning board meeting of December fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Okay.
Gafney.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Impemba.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes. Yes.
All right, five, five zero, thank you, and so I'm going to thank the folks in advance that have been staying here for our other public hearings, which have nothing to do with the zoning requirements, thank you, Ms. Ellis, um, and so we're going to go to item F.
I know.
That's a public hearing, application for approval of special permit pursuant to four point two point six point eleven restaurants of the zoning bylaw, one fifty-four Cambridge Street, the shops at Simons Park, Shea Golf LLC, doing business as Bertie Bar is the applicant.
Yes, go ahead.
So just for your information, these usually don't last that long, just have the zoning requirements that we have to go through.
Guys had a lot to talk about tonight, I love it.
I saw you guys nodding off there a little, yeah, stretch.
Meeting up to town meeting.
If anybody needs to take a quick nature break, you're all set?
They're already doing it.
Let's go.
Let's get through this.
Okay?
Do it.
Great, thank you. All right, Joe, we'll we'll get you, yeah, you don't, yep, so here we go, um, so thank you, if you want to introduce yourself and tell us what you have to say for us, thank you.
Uh, sure, my name is Joe Shea, and this is my dad.
Tom Shea.
Nice to meet you guys, um, we are looking to open up um our second golf simulator bar, we have one in Waltham right now, and looking to open it up at the the shops at Simons Park, um, with the Duffy's who own the building, they're our current landlord over in Waltham.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, we're we're looking to open up a location over there with, um, we're starting out with seven simulators, um, a full bar and a kitchen, and um, yeah, that's that's really it, so.
Okay, maybe you can get into a little bit um of of the simulators and what kind of, maybe what kind of food you're going to have here, hours, things like that.
Yeah, sure, um, so we're a bit of a seasonal business, so hours change between the summer and the winter, um, we're closed a little bit, little bit more in the summer as people are golfing outside.
Yeah.
Um, but in terms of hours, we're typically nine to eleven most days, Sundays we close a little earlier, um, with the simulators, like I said, we'll have, um, in Burlington, we're going to be putting in Trackman simulators, which are top of the line, you can play a million different courses, you can play, uh, you know, in the driving range, you can play games, it's really fun, um, not just for golfers, it's definitely for, um, really anyone that's looking to kind of go out and have a good night and hang out, so, um, and on top of that, um, like I said, we're we're going to have a full bar, um, it's a lot of a, a lot of beer, as you can imagine, is the crowd we get, um, and then the kitchen, as you can see in the food, we have, um, some appetizers, some chicken fingers, pizzas, truly bar food, simple, everything's made in commercial air fryers, so.
Okay, and this is um, uh, does your, uh, the seating, how many seats are you going to have there?
So roughly, um, we're going to have about, I think it was seventy-seven seats, um, we're still, um, the A B C C, um, came back to us about our outdoor seating, so we're going to, we're going to ex-nay that for now and then reapply.
Okay, come back for us for outdoor seating?
Because it needs, our lease needs to change in order for that to be a part of.
It has to probably be contained, right?
Well, it needs to be a part of our, like, our lease, the containing thing is a whole different issue, which I think we can solve, it's it's the being a part of our lease, being leasable at square footage, so we have to go back and get our lease changed and do all that, and then come back to you guys and come back to the to the A B C C, but, um, as you can see, we're going to have, um, that's, this will be the back of the space on on three A, um, the front will have, um, our bar, um, so we'll have bar seating up there, we have couches and tables at all of the different simulators, um, so it really separates the area from, you know, general public space, and if you're renting auto simulator, um, and then up in the back is, um, four other simulators, and we'll have some event space, some tables, um, and just more open room back there. So, uh, again, I think the the total count was, I think, seventy-seven seats, I believe.
Yeah, if you subtract the ten now, I think that was the, that was the same count.
It's been fluctuating a bit recently since we've been doing this, so.
Do we, so the other, I guess.
It's probably going to be here, remember?
Do we want, so do we want to permit, do we want this permit to include the outdoor seats?
I think we've, I think we decided that we're good to have this permit not include it, um.
So that means that if you max out at seventy-seven seats, that means that if you decide, if you go out, go back to the alcohol control board and they say you can have seats outside and you you fix the lease and do all that, you're going to have to come back here to amend the seventy-seven seats.
No, we'd prefer to do it now.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, it's included that we.
Yes, so we're just going to save you extra.
Understood, okay, I I.
Extra staff.
We'll go back to them when.
Yes.
Okay, understood, okay.
Yes, so what is it, what is the original number that you were?
So then we'd add ten more, so it was eighty-eighty-seven.
Okay.
Where is the house seating?
Where would they be?
So it would be.
I don't know, ten seats.
So you can see the seating right here, so we have, there's um.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
This is on the other side, so so the main entrance comes in from the parking lot, and then you would walk through the the business space.
Yep.
And you'd be on that walkway on the other side.
Yeah, it's kind of elevated from three A.
Yes.
It's the, it's the end of that sidewalk.
I can show you, ready, I can show you this.
They're going to want it so that you can't get into that without going through the restaurant.
Likely they will, likely they will, yes.
And it's not going to happen because the sidewalk splits, remember with the split, well, split to go down, but then you had the sidewalk that went up.
Yeah.
Along the way there.
So we, where my mouse is here on the, on the screen of, of, you know, you enter.
So there's only ten outdoor seats then?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, because we needed to make sure that we'd leave enough space for people to walk by or.
Okay, um, it sounds exciting, uh, Steph.
Um, so this is, um, we're excited too, um, this is the exact type of thing that I feel like we're looking for in the town center, um, and I feel like this use is definitely going to enhance the plaza, there's going to be a lot of synergy between Goodnight Johnny's and this, um, this space, um, and, um, I don't really have any other concerns, um, this is just for the special permit for the restaurant. So that is all that you're voting.
Okay.
Am I missing anything?
No, I think just clarify, yeah, that this is for the special part that they're going for is is for the food, the service of the food, um, kind of, if you're looking at this floor plan, that just kind of where they're getting the the seating amount, I think you explained it to the D C M just to clarify, so, so there's the seats shown, you know, at a table at the bars kind of pretty standardly, but then at each of these simulator bays that it was five, you're counting for five seats per.
Correct, and technically we can fit more in those, but, um, we're we're counting for five seats, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Um, and I'm not concerned about, um, seating here because when most of the restaurants we get are like upwards of two hundred seat, so this I think is, um.
There's plenty of.
There's plenty of.
We typically don't run to capacity unless we're having an event, um, you can imagine it's a lot of people at the bay and then either people hanging out after or before they're around, so, um, we'll we'll have trouble hitting capacity unless we're doing an event.
This is occupancies, maximum occupancy at least on this floor plan is a hundred and twenty, so that would mean full.
Yeah.
More ma, more than a maximum, each at each simulator.
Correct.
As well as every single seat at the bar and on the table.
Yeah, we we want to maximize our capacity because we do, like, part of our business, a big part of it, like I keep saying, is corporate events and birthday parties and things of that nature and getting people together in one space, so we want to make sure that we can have enough people in there and and make it be fun and fill the space, but again, we're, um, very rarely hitting a capacity, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay, why don't we start with Ms. LaRue?
I don't really have any questions, do you already have your liquor license?
Um, so we were going through the process with the A B C C, we met with the.
Got with select board already?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've already got to that. We got to kick back on that question, the outdoor, not being.
Yeah.
Right.
With the lease and.
Yeah. It it sounds great, um, assuming all goes well, when do you intend to open?
Um, well, uh, as soon as we get a permit, uh, we've been told twelve weeks, so we're working on that and, um.
So.
Yeah.
Twelve weeks?
Next year.
It's a really simple build out, yeah, yeah, we're hope, we're hoping towards end of February.
You think that's fast, I want to.
I think that's fast.
That's fast, that's fast.
Twelve weeks?
Sounds great.
I don't even know if you can renovate a bathroom in that timeframe.
Okay, we go, uh, Mister Covino, please.
Uh, no comment except at an observation, maybe, uh, did you say you already have a liquor permit granted from the selectmen?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Just a caution to the selectmen, that's how we got in trouble with, uh, uh, what was the place, on ninety Metal Six Turnpike is, uh.
Ninety Metal Six Turnpike.
Let me re, let me rephrase, we have.
It's a, it's a, it.
Approval.
It's in, it's in Reuben now.
You mean?
The one Bob's, no, da, 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 the, you know, the electronic game place.
Even Dave and Buster's.
Dave and Buster's, right.
I didn't know there was a liquor license issue there, I just thought it was kind of a use issue.
What happened with that, with David, what happened with Dave and Buster's was they went and got a permit, uh, liquor license from the selectmen, but that they, in their minds, the town had said, great, come on down, and then they, and then they came to the planning board, so, just so, sorry, I didn't mean to get off topic, Mister Chairman, I'm done, I'm done.
I think this is kind of a unique situation because there are liquor licenses designated, I think, for that site.
That's right.
So it's, yeah, so it's, you're not.
Yeah.
Yep, that's right.
Not at large in the whole town.
Yep, I remember, you're right, we did that.
Anything else, Joe?
No, just a quick question, uh, are you guys independent, you're a franchise?
Independent.
Independent?
Yeah.
And you have. Family business, we just, we like golf too much, so, tried to make it our job.
And and you have how many locations?
This will be our second.
Okay, and the the other one you said was?
Waltham.
My mighty squirrel.
My squirrel.
Oh, it's a Duffy, right, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Okay, great.
Go ahead, Ms. Sutherland.
So no concerns over parking? No?
No. Okay, Mr. You're all set, uh, just a couple of things with the with the seating and then maybe some what you can see from Cambridge Street with regard to the simulators themselves, so, you know, certainly the standing conditions, I would say, of no, nothing on the umbrellas of the outdoor seating.
Yep.
Um, and and there would be no, uh, video or no screens on the outdoor seating area.
We're going to have, no, no screens, the windows are going to be frosted.
Okay, I'm just even see TV, if somebody was out there wanting to watch the game or something, he has it mounted, okay, so we'll put that as a condition, and then, so, yeah, so tell me about that, so the the glass is going to be frosted, so you can't see the simulator from?
Yeah, um, Caleb, if you go up a little bit, I'll show you, so you'll be able to, there's a double door in the back.
Yep.
You'll be able to see through, that would be a glass door that's already there, all other windows will have a wall from the simulator, uh, either blocking it or or if there is a window that is not that glass door, it's going to be frosted, so you won't be able to see through.
Good, that's good, that's from Cambridge Street, I have no problem if it's not from the other side of the parking lot, so you can see and you see the action going on there.
The the windows not being frosted, you're saying?
From, if you're from the parking lot area and you're kind of looking.
That'd be good, that's good to know.
You know, I, this is my personal opinion, because then that would be kind of.
It's distracting drivers.
It's not distracting to the driver.
There's also some like nice greenery out there that.
Beautiful, yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, it's from being too distracted.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can show that on.
Yeah, you can barely see, so elevated from from.
I I I'm really excited about this, um, one is that I gave up my golf game a number of years ago because I'm not very good, but if, you know, if I can get into a local place where I can simulate, get a little fine tuning, which probably be impossible.
Maybe you'll give up your pickleball and go for bar.
Oh, man.
No way, no way.
So I'm I'm excited about it, I like the concept, I think it matches well, it's complementary concept to, you know, Goodnight Johnny's there, you know, if, um, you know, they want to go a little more food than just the the bar food, they could pop over there and and vice versa, say, hey, let's just pop over to, uh, to the Bertie Bar and and have a little fun there as well, I I think that's great and a and a great addition to Burlington, so thank you, um, this is a public hearing, so let's open it up, anybody here, looks like no, anybody on this?
I don't see anyone online, no.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing on these matters.
Second.
Can I just make a comment before?
Yeah, please, go ahead, Joe.
Bill, when they talked about no TVs out there, I think you bought, if I.
If they face in, if they face in, not out.
Even outside, if you want them outside on the patio. The problem we see with it is the space doesn't allow, it's not.
Won't allow for it, okay.
Cut to the building department and.
It's narrow.
Yeah, so you have to have a clear path.
Yeah.
Oh, for fire, yep.
And I think it would be more just if someone was waiting to golf.
Yeah.
Or they had already golfed and wanted to sit down out there or.
Yeah, 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 right, right.
I don't think it would be comfortable enough to sit there and watch a game, right?
Right, okay. We have any TVs in to watch the game anyway, inside of the, yeah, okay, cool.
Everywhere we have the TVs inside.
Okay, yeah, okay. Okay, good.
Yeah.
Motion made, second, close the public hearing.
Um, Gafney.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Impemba.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Five zero.
I would like to make a motion to approve the request of Shea Golf LLC, doing business as Bertie Bar, for a special permit pursuant to section four point two point six point eleven, restaurants of Article four of the Town of Burlington zoning bylaws, to permit the development of a new restaurant indoor golf simulator facility and interior improvements for property located in the general business BG and central business CBD district at one fifty-four Cambridge Street, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A attached.
As amended?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there a second?
We, um, wanted to make sure that any umbrellas don't have logos on them.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Do we have a second?
Oh, second, yeah.
Gafney.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Impemba.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Great.
Five zero.
Five zero, thank you, welcome to Burlington, thank you.
Appreciate it. Good luck, yeah.
Looking forward to getting there.
Sure you'll find my husband there.
Yes.
Okay, um, I'm going to entertain a motion?
Oh, Mr. Charlie, I'd like to make a motion to take items 7G and 7H together.
Is there a second, Joe?
Second.
All those, uh, we'll call.
Um, Gaffney.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Impemba.
Yes.
Covino.
Okay, five, zero, to take G and H together, yes.
You guys can look all over here.
Okay.
Go ahead, Bill.
Sounds good, perfect. Okay. All right.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
So, before we start, I do wanna advise you on the special permit. It does take five votes, um, for approval on a special permit. We only have five here, one on the video. That being the case, um, you, you may want to, and Mr. Charlie suggests, and I know you've been here all night, and I apologize for that, that you may wanna continue this one more time until we get the other two members here. Cuz if, if one member doesn't approve it, then you get denied, so.
It, it doesn't lay in the absence, it, it's denied, period?
It would be, it would be denied, and then what do you have to do if it's denied?
So.
If we vote on tonight.
So we could still discuss it.
Discuss it.
Discuss it.
And continue.
We can absolutely still discuss it.
And then the next.
And kinda read the room, I guess, and then, and then, and then go from there.
Continue.
But that's up to you. If you, um, after the discussion, you don't feel comfortable asking for a vote tonight, you can ask, um, you can ask for, um, a continuance here at the meeting. Um, but if you, um, if you're confident, then we can do that. So, those are, those are.
Yeah, typically, you, you may wanna, you can talk about it, but you may wanna get the vote when we have.
Seven.
At least six.
Is this online?
Yes.
No?
Oh, yes, it is.
Okay. All right, well, welcome back. Um, it looks like we've got a lot of new stuff here, which is excellent. Um, if you just wanna give us just a, for folks that are, are new to this, just a real qu- a quick five-minute, what you're planning to do with the coffeehouse and the art and things like that, and then we'll get into, uh, the, the, the parking report and other activity.
And I'd like to hear more about the food.
And the food, too, okay? Yep. So if you wanna talk about the food and just, um, and the concept, please.
Um, yes, my name is Raquel.
Right in, right in the microphone, yep.
All right. Yes, my name is Raquel. I'm working with, um, I think the biggest thing right now is the menu. We have a menu based on caramel cough. It seems very sweet, but isn't that much. Um, basically, low calorie, and we can make kinda cappuccino based on caramel with different flavors. So it's a kinda differential of the usual way, plus the regular, um, cough styles that we have. This is the caramel with flavors, it's the, the most different on the menu. Um, croissant, cakes, and, um, the, we have a couple desserts as well. Um, and basically that, the croissant, French bread, we pretend to be doing, like, loaded, that could have, like, bacon, egg, and cheese on or not. And I, I'm not building a super big menu at the beginning, because I wanna, um, make tests on the menu and make sure everybody likes what I'm serving there and going forward, basically, to summarize.
Okay.
Um, with the conception, as we discussed before, it's, um, we have limitations and been discussing that for the parking, um, being flexible and willing to go lower, lower seats to the, to the place, so we can have more possibilities of getting approved it. Uh, for this latest version, I have 16 seats versus, um, previously we had 21. It's not fully updated on the survey, because it's just a proposal to, to see if we could get approved it on the 16. I'm definitely willing to go lower on the seats.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Steph?
Um, I, the only question I have is, can you just quickly go over, and I don't know if you need a copy, can you go over, um, the changes that you made to the, to the site plan and the landscaping plan from the last meeting you were here to this meeting, so that everybody, um, is aware of, um, of kind of how, how things have evolved?
Yes. Sure, for the site plan, we have purple bush in front. It's a kind of, um, bush that will survive during the winter, and it's resistant to salt, maybe, not as much of, um, because we have, like, little purple flowers, but it, it's a good one. Um, we have a bed of mulch. As Liz has pointed, we might do 50% mulch and 50% sod. Um, that's something that the plan shows, but the sod, it's not discriminated as an option. And we also have, um, the English oak on the right side. Um, I think, thank you, Connor. Yes, it's, it's really, uh, there's an option to get lower ones, so we don't have to get the ones that goes and, and grow too big, too high, but at least, since it's a tiny spot, it's more, um, it fits better compared to others, and it's also very resistant to all, uh, seasons and salt as well. So that's basically the improvements on the site plan, and we also proposed the parking for the, the handicap located on the 13 and 14, um, more centralized to facilitate the access.
Okay.
I have.
Steph?
So, um, so the park, from what I recall, the parking lot layout did change. There were perpendicular spaces on the left side, like, actually facing the columnar oaks. Um, and so the site plan has changed, so that, I think that was, um, that was good.
Yep.
Um, the one question I have is, um, regarding where the handicap parking is, is there, currently, a ramp from the sidewalk, from, from the, the pavement for the cars to the sidewalk for the people? Is there a ramp there, is that gonna be added, so that?
So that should be added. We do not have a ramp, um, that gives access right there, so that should be added.
That will be, so that, so just assume that.
As an adaptation.
So that will be a cond- that will be a condition as part of it. And that, yeah, I mean, that, that's gonna be something that Mark, the, the building department's gonna make for handicap accessibility.
Yes.
Just for clarity, the existing ramp is essentially where 17 is now.
Yep, yep.
Where 17 is.
So all the way to the right, where Tetchumidus is, right? Tetchumidus, yep.
Yeah, where the cursor is.
Um, okay. And, um, I did notice that you're putting, um, you're enclosing the dumpsters, which is definitely something we like to see. Um, the other question I have is, are you, um, this is obviously gonna be, need to be restripped, are you gonna re, is there, is it gonna be repaved at all, or is it just gonna, you know?
It'll be resaled and restripped.
Okay.
Okay. Um, that is?
And frankly, just on, on mentioning of the condition of the lot, we're all kinda still waiting, oh, by the way, I'm Bruce Travers, I represent the owners of the building, the Travers family. Um, we're all kinda still waiting with bated breath on what the state's gonna finalize with their, their.
Oh, the, the curb cut, yeah.
Yeah, cuz it's, the curb cut is still left in, in a state of disrepair.
Right, right.
They poured the concrete, but they haven't done any final.
I remember that, yep.
They cut some of my curb, but they didn't replace it yet, so I'm not sure what the final, um, from the state looks like.
I can tell you, I'm, I'm, we can, I would reach out to our engineering department, and they may be able to get it. Um, the state isn't always forthcoming with us either, you kinda have to know who to ask, but it's definitely, shoot an email up to them, or I can, you email me and I'll get it up, and they should be able to show you that section of what the state is proposing, but, I mean, it's pretty, it's actually really good, because if you, if they weren't doing it, as part of this, this, we, the, the board would probably, you know, would have had, you would've had to redo the sidewalk there, so this, this is, like, fortuitous.
I'm hopeful and confident their product will be, you know, will be more than appropriate.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Um, the other thing I will say, as far as, I just wanna let you guys know that this technically does, this does meet the parking requirements for this plaza.
Okay.
That is all.
Okay, thank you. Let's, uh, start with Ms. LaRue.
Okay. Um, I love the concept. I think it sounds wonderful. My only concern is regarding parking. Where did this come from? Who did this?
Uh, that's from me.
So, tell me what this is.
Uh, well, so essentially lays out, uh, the opening hours of the existing, uh, businesses that are there in the complex, and, uh, there was a seven-day, uh, assessment done, um, starting the Friday.
By whom?
I'm sorry?
By whom?
Myself and the surrogates of mine.
So you had, you basically sat there and watched?
I, um, I and others made multiple trips. Every, as you can see, is laid out day by day in the times, and we literally did a, a vehicle count of just the vehicles that were in the lot on those dates and those times.
Wow.
To demonstrate the, the flow of traffic there. And I did the critical part to the whole graph and all the charts is, um, the upper column, the beginning of the day, if you will, any given day in the seven-day period, we did a seven-day period, a week straight, um, from 06:00, 6:00 AM until, uh, 9:00 AM. Uh, it's a three-hour window, obviously, there's nobody there, not one vehicle in the lot, and that's consistent for seven days straight. The first opening is nine o'clock, is when the hair salon opens up, and there's one or two folks that open up the salon at nine o'clock. So that's the first traffic into the lot, is at nine.
And what are the coffeehouse hours?
Six, six to five.
Six to five. Correct. So it does get busier later in the day.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you'd say.
And that will be.
Yeah, noon, 11 to noon is when you start seeing the, eight, ten, eleven.
Eleven to two, actually.
But there's really no traffic.
Which is three.
Of any substance there until about 11.
Okay. So, um, this question is for you, not for, for you. Have you reached out to your next-door neighbor and asked them about every, a shared parking agreement?
Uh, yes, so, um, my family's frankly, uh, not comfortable with trying to, um, engage in, um, the legalities and contractual agreements, and frankly, the cost of trying to pursue, um, renting other space, to in fact rent the space. Um, the, uh, the, uh, leases that are existing there and the monthly, uh, rent that is due is a very modest amount for all the customers. Um, my family's kept it that way on purpose. They're long-term tenants. Um, they all had to deal with the COVID financial situation, and now they've all dealt with the, uh, inflationary track that we've been on for three or four years. So there's been no raise in, in, uh, in rent for multiple years, for all the three tenants. Um, and that's, it's done because we appreciate their, their long-term commitment to the facility, and, uh, it's also because there's a break-even point. And as I said in the first time I was here, um, six weeks ago or so, um, the building's owned by my family, primarily the maître and my mom.
I understand that.
And it really does come down to the, the, the volume of, uh, this is their primary income.
I understand.
And the price is low on purpose.
Have you spoken with the other tenants?
Um, I have spoken to, um, three of them, yes. They know about the process, they know what's going on.
And have they expressed any concerns about the parking?
Um, well, I think on record, we have one tenant that went on record with the board.
So is that the only tenant that expressed?
That's the only tenant that I've, I've experienced any.
Okay, so.
Serious concern.
I have been, I've, I have been at this plaza many times, and it is difficult getting in and out of there, and the parking is extremely tight. Um, I was not aware that you could drive around the left side of the building, that there was more parking over there, so you might need to provide some signage, so people even realize that. I, I don't want to deny this, but I'm also not comfortable. I think the only way I can get to a yes tonight would be if we had a provision in here that we're going to review this in six months, and if there are problems at that, during that time period, that we would then require that the landlord pursue a shared parking arrangement, if there are problems.
Um, that, that coming down, is that, is that something that you would be willing to, to do?
Um, well, I'd ask, what would constitute a problem? What does a problem sound or look like?
Um, I think it would probably, we would have to talk with all the other tenants to see if they're having issues with their clients or their client, their customers being able to find parking, or if they're having problems themselves with employee parking. So anything like that, we're gonna have to reach out to the other tenants, probably, in order to get an answer about that. And you also would be one of the people we would reach out to, because you need to make sure that your customers have someplace to park. My concern is mostly about employee parking, because the parking is so tight, and you're gonna have a couple of employees, jeweler has a couple of employees, I don't know how many people are in the salon, so you're gonna have probably six to eight employees taking up a lot of the parking there.
Mm-hmm.
So that is, I think, what I would need to get to yes, but I don't know how the rest of my board members feel.
Let's go to, uh, Ms. Sutherland.
Do you mind bringing back up the, um, parking spot number 17? I'm just very confused how you would even back out of that parking spot.
Number 17?
Yeah.
If there's somebody in 16.
Yeah.
If swing left, I'm backing all the way back up.
I mean, this is 20, this is measured 20 feet, so you're racking straight up, and then?
And then you can get?
And then you would take a, I mean, if you're.
You can swing around.
Yeah, you could kinda move, move your mouse, I mean.
It moves the length of a cow, that's.
So 24 feet is the, um, standard for a new parking lot? 24 feet is the standard width for a drive aisle? Um, this is 20, so it's five, it's just five, it's full, it's five feet off.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a small car, it's not gonna be a problem, if it's some big.
It's four feet off.
If it's gonna be a really big pickup truck.
Oh, sorry, you're right, Joe. You're right, it's four feet off.
Right.
You could do a couple three-point turns and get out.
Yeah, if it's a big car, they're gonna have to go back and forth.
Not parked there, not parked there, if it's a big car.
Or not parked, Bernie.
Um, I mean, I was just gonna say, for me, um, a parking lot makes me very uncomfortable, but that's, it's tough, because it's not a, a fault of the business seeking a special permit, so.
Yes.
This one is incredibly difficult for me.
Actually, I just thought of something else, you know?
Really?
With the, with the handicap parking where it is.
Mm-hmm.
Those are larger cars. Would it be better to shift them more to the middle, so that they have an easier way out?
Um, one?
Not all of them are, I shouldn't say that. Sometimes, sometimes they're not, but if you had, like, a handicap accessible van parking there.
So, um, according to Mark Dupell, building inspector, this site only requires one handicap space. Is that true?
I think there, Barbara, looks different than what's on the screen.
You're looking at the old one, Barbara, sorry.
They are more in the center on the screen.
Okay.
Yeah, they're on the outside.
That's better. Yeah, that's better.
Do we wanna?
Never mind.
Do we wanna change it then to the one handicap spot?
So, the other, the other thought.
Why, true.
Um, the other thought I had, and this would, might help with, um, spot 17, is to make spots, is, would it be possible to make spot 17 the loading zone for the handicap? Or does it have to be, it might have to be on the left side, I don't know.
Well, frankly, the ramp exists in the area of 16 and 17, the existing ramp. So it probably fits better, actually.
It fits better, but the only question I have is, can you have the loaded? No, I guess you can. So, could we swap the loading zone for the handicap?
Could be.
17, and then have 16 be the handicap?
And then it's near the ramp.
So no one's actually pulling out of that spot.
Yeah, so you'll be able to have space to do it.
Right.
Do a little bit, have a little bit more space, is that?
Yes, with me?
Yeah.
So 17 would be the, the loading zone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
17 would be the actual handicap, right?
Right.
And they get rid of the other handicap spot.
And I would, um, each, see, you could, I, you could, um, I, I, we would need to definitely double-check that with the building department to make sure it meets ADA.
Yeah.
But is, and then, would, but then, yeah, so that you're not losing a parking space, but you're also, um, providing a little bit more clearance for people to back out.
Mm-hmm.
And you don't have to build a new ramp.
And you don't have?
I like that.
And, and we'll also have the staff also say only 50% mulch, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I still want the six-month review.
Um, I, is, are you guys amenable to that?
And just for clarity, remember, um, six months post-opening date.
Yes, yes, of course.
I'd be after a certificate of occupancy.
Oh, yeah, 100%. 100%.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and then after six months, if there is issues, then, then my family would have to approach the neighboring properties.
Yeah, we would probably wanna do it anyway, cuz you want your tenants to be able to.
It's a whole can of worms.
Oh, yeah.
Insurance, the statement of use, their, uh, it's an easy, it's an easy task.
Mr. Prema, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I think, Liz, you started out by saying legally, there's enough spots there for the use.
Is officially, right?
Officially, yeah.
Now we added one.
So legally, there's enough.
You're good to go.
Use. We have a use that is completely compatible, basically, the busiest time of the day is gonna be when there's zero cars in that parking lot. So are we looking for, if they don't go in there, there's gonna be another use in there? Are we looking for a use that's not as compatible? Like, that couldn't be more compatible, right? I mean, that's when most people get their coffee, is between 6:00 and 9:00 in the morning. I mean, I, it's not the ideal situation, but the bottom line is that it is what it is, and it, and it's, and it, you know, to me, it creates, it's a small business, creating a hardship to force them to go and try to negotiate with some lot next door.
That's only if there's a problem.
What's that?
Only if there's a problem.
Well, right, but, but.
Not now.
We're telling them this, and, and it's legally, there's enough parking spots for what this, what they're trying to use here. So how can you say that to them? Like, I, I don't really know.
There weren't any parking spots, excuse me, but, um, I think the code read, um, 21 There weren't enough parking spots, excuse me, but I think the code read twenty-one seats. And that's why they applied originally for twenty-one seats.
Yeah, now it's sixteen.
Yeah, she's additionally reduced it.
They reduced it by five.
Right, okay.
I mean, I'm, so my opinion is, we got, it's a tough location, like we have a lot of other tough locations, but we can't deny good businesses going in and force hardships like that with small businesses to be, you know. If I'm the neighbor next door, I'm, I'm gonna be like, what's, what's.
Well, so I've done some, I didn't contact them, I've done some legal research. And it's, there are many layers to any kind of like dual use agreement between separate properties.
And so now you're talking about not just one person, if it was all owned by one person, those are condos. You get a deal, now they gotta go back to every one of the owners of every condo in that place. And it's, it's not like it's one building that owns all that. And they can give you one answer and that's, and that's it. You gotta now negotiate with about, there's probably fifty or sixty units in there, right? Different owners.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't even.
Well, I mean, even the building has a bunch of different condos in it. And the other building is, is owned by Demory, but then you've got all the storefronts that are all separate condos. And then you've got bays in the back of those that are all separate condos. There's gotta be fifty or sixty condos in that place. It's not negotiating with one person, it's negotiating with fifty or sixty people.
Yeah.
So it's not an easy task. I, I think it's a.
And it runs into maintenance, care, snow removal, and the biggest hangup is the insurance and statement of use. Who's using it? I slip and fall on their property, but I'm really heading over to the coffee shop. It gets, it's a bit of a quiet, not that it, not that it couldn't be done at the expense of, you know, lawyers and lots of documents, but.
So now that you brought up snow, are you going to be removing the snow from the site?
Oh, yeah, snow removal, yeah, that's always.
I mean, you'll actually truck the snow out if you have large storms?
Yeah, if it's too much to store.
So you're not blocking your very needed parking spots.
Yeah, in the KIMI, where the dumpsters are, they have to have access, the dumpsters always have to have access. So no snow removal can just pile it back there, it has to be hauled out if need be.
Okay.
Mr. Covino.
I would, I think I'd be willing to vote in favor if there was a six month review. The six month review doesn't necessarily have to say that we would force shared parking. But it, it could be, they've already reduced to sixteen seats, it could be reduced to twelve seats, you know. Some kind of mitigation, but I'd like to at least review it and make sure we didn't screw up really badly. Because already, you know, I'm thinking, I've been here fifty years and I've probably used that shopping center once, at least once a week for fifty years, you know, well, not fifty years, but say forty-five years. And, and part of, part of the feeling you get in the shopping center when you're trying to get in or out of a parking space is, it's really, really tight. And I didn't realize that that aisle is only twenty feet. And when you drive a big Tahoe or whatever, it makes a difference. So that's part of the confusion, I think, that, that we're all feeling in the fact that while maybe this is way too congested or there's not enough parking. So, but I feel comfortable with, especially now that it's down to sixteen seats, with a, some kind of a six month review, not necessarily tied to shared parking, but just review and mitigate if there's a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Covino. So it sounds like everyone's fine with that. Comments from me, I go by there multiple times a day, I live up the hill, so that's my, that's my home.
Grapevine?
Yeah, we go Grapevine, take a right, take a left, take a right, and I'm in the. It's actually right, left, right, left, right, left, actually.
Those are the directions.
Exactly what I tell them. So I've been there, and again, like Ms. Covino, I've been there multiple times at the Plaza myself. I was there last night and there was a big Tahoe trying to get out. And I had to wait on Cambridge Street because he was, he had to back up and he blocked the entire entrance. So it's a very, very tight spot, so I was, I had to wait there until he could get out before I could get in. And what's gonna exacerbate that is gonna be the single lane that the state's gonna put in there. So I'd asked the state if we could do a left hand only going up Grapevine, on the, just on the evening, just have that single lane going up as the people go home towards Berica and the cut through. Because otherwise, it's gonna be backing up there and just heading right back. It's, actually, I want it to be a left hand turn, turn only, because in the morning, it's not as bad. Everyone's heading south, I want it to be a left hand turn only for evening rush hour.
Into Grapevine?
Into Grapevine, heading north, left hand only, up that way. In the mornings, not as bad, but the evening, if you're gonna tunnel that right in, it's gonna be right at your driveway, right there. And it's just gonna back up with the people that are always heading into the neighborhood up that way. Otherwise, what I'm, what I'll do is I'll just head into the, Terry F to the bowling alley, you know, versus that. But I wish you the best of luck, I think it's a great concept, I wish you success. I think it's durable, the timing is gonna be tight, and I'll keep my eye on it, so. Yeah, it sounds like I'm okay, you're okay, you're okay, so if you go with the five, I think you might be in good shape.
All right, so I don't have any die in my pocket, but.
There you go.
I'll roll them anyway.
There you go. So do we have a motion? As a public hearing?
Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing on these matters.
Oh, second.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
And Pemba.
Yes.
Covino.
Okay, thank you.
Five zero, thank you.
Motion to approve the request of ARC Projects and Company LLC for a special permit pursuant to section four point two point six point ten, restaurant, fast order food and takeout of Article Four of the Town of Burlington zoning bylaws to permit a coffee shop to be known as Broodin Burlington. The property located in the general business BG and central business CBD districts and partially in the water resource WR zoning district located at two seventy-one Cambridge Street, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A and attached and as amended.
Second.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
And Pemba.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Okay, and?
Welcome.
Motion to approve the request for approval of a site plan application of ARC Projects and Company LLC for property located at two seventy-one Cambridge Street to modify the site with parking lot and landscape enhancements as reflected on a plan entitled Proposed Plot Plan Two Seventy-One Cambridge Street in Burlington, Massachusetts, prepared by Scott Serrato, PLS, dated October fifth, two thousand twenty-one.
That's, that's, that's supposed to be twenty-four.
Dated October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, consisting of one sheet, subject to the following revisions, terms and conditions, and as amended.
Second.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
And Pemba.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Five zero, thank you. Thank you, and welcome to Burlington.
When are you opening?
Well, thank you so much, hopefully, I'm aiming to January, I wanna be realistic with everything we have to do going forward. Can't wait, thank you.
Good luck, good luck. All right, let's see what else we've got here today. And thank you for waiting the entire evening.
Yeah, thank you so much, we, we get it.
Do we have a rule that we have to end at eleven? We have a rule that you have to make a motion.
You have to make it to extend, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do that.
We are gonna whip through this.
So as appointment none, we have minutes on October third, did everybody read them?
Yes.
Okay, we have.
Yeah, make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes of October third, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Alls in favor? Aye.
We have to make a roll call, team. Gaffney.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
And Pemba.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Okay, five zero, thank you. Now, quick discussion on the marijuana warrant article community meeting at Grandview. Ms. LaRue, if you wanna take a minute and just tell us what happened there?
I'm not sure we really need to discuss most of it, we've already made our decision that we're gonna delay it past to the first February meeting. And I think nothing much happened last night that didn't happen here.
Okay.
And.
Thank you. Correspondents, none, reports, town council, subcommittee reports, high school building committee, why don't we start with that?
Okay, I attended the event last night, Burlington High School. There was a lot of very interesting information that I think I told them very explicitly that I feel like information is not well found. And basically, they are developing schematic design starting in March, which means by March, they're making a decision on which option they're gonna go with. There are multiple options on the table. Three of those options are to do an addition and renovation, and then another three options for a brand new build. The, one of the brand new builds includes purchasing property at Corporate Drive, that empty lab space. They said that lab space right now, they need to build a two hundred thousand square foot space plus a little bit. The building, I guess, is like a hundred thousand, so they would also then like double it. Basically, they would use that whole space for education only purposes. And TBD, what they would be doing with the old building.
So they would use the existing building and rehab that, they wouldn't be building a new build?
Well, then they would also have to, based on the picture I took, have to add another building and do work for the traffic flow, like there would still be.
Would all the fields be located in their current location? Because there's no room for fields there.
TBD, there's so much they have to figure out.
Fields.
I don't like the idea of them crossing Cambridge Street to get to their fields.
The one that seems to be the most realistic from a timing, very rough cost estimate, is to build where the field is.
Not the front, the practice.
Football field?
Football field.
That we just spent a couple million dollars on.
Football field?
Yeah.
We just built, put a.
And then to take the middle, the current high school, take the middle of it, basically demo it down, build the field there, or the new field there, use one half of the, the lower half as like the field house, the upper half to host like B cat and basically the non-educational stuff. Yeah, I'm telling, people need to be involved because it is.
Wow.
So there's another community meeting in March. Again, the next meetings are not until they've basically made a decision on which option they're gonna go with.
But wait a minute, they must be having building committee meetings all along.
Yes, yes.
So we need to be.
But there's no, correct, there, this is, this was the first community meeting. They are going to town meeting in September twenty twenty-five for funding. So that's why they're starting schematic design in March, four months, in four months, finishing it by September town meeting.
So that means they're gonna have to decide on which program, which one they go with by March.
They're targeting construction starting fall two thousand twenty-six, move in two thousand twenty-nine. Keep in mind Fox Hill, move in is two thousand twenty-eight.
They're gonna have to do a.
Dead exclusion.
Dead exclusion in there.
Yes.
This is a very aggressive schedule.
Yes.
I have a question, is the MSBA involved or is this all funded by?
All funded by us, they are estimating, they're estimating in the three hundred million dollar range. The.
Is that including buying property if they decide that?
No, that does not include buying property, that does not include figuring out what to do with the old building.
Does it include the fields, reconstructing the fields?
They weren't even planning to present dollars at the meeting, it was not a part of the presentation. Eiler said, if you're making a decision in March, you have to have some concept.
Yeah.
The, the criteria they showed was very limited, so I brought up to them, they are the same OPM as Lexington. And I said, the Lexington website has a one hundred and thirty row criteria matrix spreadsheet that goes through everything you could possibly think of to make a decision on the options. So I asked them, when is our matrix coming?
When is our website?
And I told them on the website, they said, oh, the information's on the website, I told them, it is, you have it buried in your meeting packets. It is, it is there, but it is buried in meeting packets, you know, the agenda, invoices, and then the information. So I spoke at the meeting yesterday that I felt like the website was not being forthcoming with information.
Yeah, the Lexington website is just, you can go on there and you know exactly where to go to find information. It's so clear and simple, the way it's laid out.
So with like the new constructions, there's also, they'd be, I took pictures too, I can send you guys these pictures.
I would love to do those.
The thing with the new construction is then they would not need swing space, but they would not have a football field for a couple of years. So, yeah.
Boy, we just spent all that money on the new field, the planning. Yeah, get ahead planning is, is something we've talked about.
Correct. They're building to eleven hundred students, yeah, fall two thousand twenty-six, targeting two thousand twenty-nine move on. I think for me, the most concerning thing is they're, they're starting to develop the schematic design in March.
They're building for eleven hundred students, how many are in there now?
It's a good question.
Yeah, maybe less than that.
Yeah, I think I said less.
I think when my daughter was, was around twelve hundred, and it's gone down since.
So they're gonna build for eleven hundred and they were twelve hundred?
No, when my daughter graduated, that was six.
They did say enrollment and he's going back.
That's what I'm saying, though.
They did say enrollment's going.
They had twelve hundred then, back when I was in, when we were in there.
Oh.
We had, we had.
Seven, eight hundred.
Six hundred, seven hundred class.
Yeah.
And you had four classes in there, so, you know, and you're gonna bank for eleven hundred?
And the education plan, to me, is unclear, they said it's all in there, but the education plan, which is typically them what you're gonna build a schematic design to, was very unclear to me. The, the option of purchasing one Corporate Drive, they, I just saw my note, they did say they would add a sister building because the current building is half the size they need.
All right, thank you.
So we have, who's the subcommittee for the Burlington High School?
It is.
Building committee.
It is.
I decided that I wanted to be.
Yeah, because.
You're on it, you're on it.
It's Brenda and Jo.
So are all of these, these are all public beings, so we just have to look for them on the town website? Are they on the town website, though, because they're school?
Probably not.
Sure.
Engaged.
They are?
At our June sixth meeting, the Burlington High School Building Committee, we appointed Jess, Brenda, and Jo.
There you go, good, the gruesome threesome.
Jess, so are they informing you of meetings?
No.
Of course not. Okay.
Because if they're not on the town calendar.
They are on the town calendar.
They are, they're public meetings.
The chair of that committee, I'm told, is Catherine Bond.
Yeah, it appears that way.
Maybe you need to reach out to her and make sure she's informing all of you three, and then you can inform me.
I can, I can do that, I can do that through the school committee chair.
Okay, because, yikes.
Yeah, it sounds like there's.
And they have a lot of administrat, are they gonna continue to have all the administration that they have in there now? They have preschools in there now.
So that's, the preschool and that type of stuff, they're labeling as non-educational stuff, and that all depends on which schematic design they choose. If they choose the one to drive, to buy Corporate Drive, they literally said TBD where the rest of that goes.
Well, I know they've been looking at Mount Hope.
No, they extended that lease.
Yeah, they did, yeah, that lease was extended.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Mount Hope is not an option.
Oh, I didn't know that.
The only options are onsite and some sort of reconfigure or buying Corporate Drive.
They could have done Mount Hope and they could have extended that to the PNO right over there, and that'd be perfect. Use the same exit, coming right out. All right.
Who made the decision to extend that lease, do we know?
The select board.
Select board didn't, without.
So any buildings and facilities, it's all.
All right, police station, building committee.
Think a while.
Police station, building committee, Barbara?
We haven't had a, we had a meeting last month, and it was mainly talking about the swing space that they're gonna be using over where the water treatment plant is. They have not brought forward a new design for the building or a site plan yet. I'm told that's going to be at our next meeting, but I don't know when the next meeting is going to be, and I suspect it's not gonna be till.
And do we need to do anything on the water treatment plant, staff?
Yes, we will be, they have to do a special permit because it's, it's on a lot of use. But they're gonna be doing that, and then basically, they're gonna just be updating the site plan to show the additional parking that they're gonna be putting in there. It's not gonna be paved, it's just gonna be kind of gravel and stripes. They're trying to, you know, bare bones this so that they can really focus on the main.
And the light there is at fourth Ave, I wonder what, how close that is, they're gonna tie that in, okay.
To put in signage at the street, there's gonna be a lot of wave funding because people need to know where the police are.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Alls in favor? Aye. Good, thank you.